Good evening all, this is the February 5th, 2019 Eastbrook Township Planning Board Meeting. In accord with the open public meeting law, on December 11th, 2018, noted this meeting, stated time, date, and location, was sent to the Home News Tribune. And on December 18th, the location of this meeting was changed and sent to the Home News Tribune filed, and the township were posted on the bulletin board in the lobby of the municipal book. Copy of this notice will be incorporated in the minutes of this meeting. The Chair reserves the right to call an application in order to bring that appearing on the agenda on each application. The Chair will give the public an opportunity to comment. Planning Board will entertain no new business after 10:30, and will close all proceedings by 11:00. The doors outside of the auditorium are the exits to be used in case of fire or other emergencies, and if you are unable, please rise and join me in a pledge for the flag. Can we say anyone in the audience who wonder, the Mayor is a member of the Planning Board, and since Brad has been elected Mayor, he has missed almost none, or may out the any of our Planning Board meetings. The reason he has not been here on any of this application's meetings, or he, as you may know, it's been a pretty well-publicized application, the courts are involved with this one, and he was directed not to participate in the hearing of this application. Trust me, he would want to be here, but that's the only reason why our Mayor is not here, and will not be here while we're hearing this application. Okay, the first item of business are the minutes of the January 23rd meeting, which we got in our packets. We threw minutes by voice vote. Mr. Rothman, you weren't here at that meeting?
That is correct, but I have read the minutes, and I have signed the certification form and provided it to staff.
So then Peter, he can then vote on the minutes, correct?
Yes.
What's the Board's pleasure with the minutes?
motion to adopt.
They've been moved, we have a second, moved in second, and a discussion. Seeing all those in favor of the minutes as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and the extensions, the minutes passed. The next item is our Planning Board reorganization. Do I have the backup on this stuff first? Lord, do I have the backup on?
Um, I don't.
And our regular Planning Board attorney, just walked him in the room, he was probably afraid we were gonna get rid of him while he wasn't here. So Peter.
I will leave, yes, I served my two minutes.
I neglected the hat ass for the role to be called, so please follow the role.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Hachme?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Reese?
Here.
Mr. Rothman?
Here.
Mr. Friscolo?
Here.
Councilman Sfadofino?
Here.
Mr. Heppel?
Here.
Mr. Tujia?
Here.
Mayor Cohen? Chairman Taylor?
Here. Since we're, I don't have the backup I need, and this is gonna be a long meeting, and we have a regular Planning Board meeting tomorrow night, we're gonna hold the reorganization and the resolutions until tomorrow night. So now we go back to old business, application, AP, that certified the HD Summerhill. Mr. Himmelman, are you on that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman Taylor, nice to see you, good evening. David Himmelman for the applicant, HD Summerhill LLC. Mr. Chairman, oh, Mr. Saxton, do you wanna say something?
No, I'm good.
Okay, great. Mr. Chairman, just to sort of give a lay out for tonight, we intend on presenting most likely two witnesses, if we have time, we could do a third, but the intended goal would be to have our engineer, Brett Scapinis, who's to my left, who was sworn at the last meeting, who will go through some of the issues and items that were discussed at the last meeting. In addition, Chairman Taylor, as I think you're aware, our professional team met with your staff and your professionals from CME, and more of a technical review meeting to review some of the issues that several of the Board members have raised, and so we would like the opportunity to review those with the Board, and that would be primarily the focus of Mr. Scapinis's testimony, and then we would have our traffic engineer as well testify, so that he would be up next, and if time allows, we would proceed with architectural testimony. So if there's no further questions, Chairman Taylor, we can proceed with our first witness.
Steve, there.
As I indicated, Mr. Scapinis is here, he was previously sworn in, so I don't think we need to deal with that.
Don't just remind me that you're still under.
Understood, yes.
My understanding, Mr. Scapinis, is you would like to review some of the technical issues that have been discussed and raised by the Board and its professionals, and I guess it's an out quote of your meeting, which we heard last week, so if we went through some of those issues, and if you're going to refer to any exhibits, you could certainly reference that.
Sure, yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to run through. Mr. Scapinis, Mr. Himmelman, if you don't mind, I'm thinking that the Board members to the left are just craning their necks, looking, can we use the podium? Sure. I was gonna say, if Mr. Scapinis goes to the podium, then we can at least look, do you want me to move the? You can move that as well, yeah, yeah. Do you wanna pull the easel? You know, it's gonna get stuck. Actually, I'll leave it there when I go to the.
It's gonna be out there, right?
But if you go to the podium, it'll be easier for us to follow. Yeah. Move the easel just to the, just to the side of our court reporter. Drop the legs now. Yeah. So this evening, what I'd like to do is to go through and talk about some of the key items that we ran through at the last meeting. Now, I understand normal protocol would be ahead of this meeting to prepare a set of plans that take care of revisions, to the professionals' letters, to the comments from the Board, and make a full submission. Clearly, we did not have the time to be able to do that, to get that in 10 days prior. We will be able to do that for the next meeting, and we intend to do so, but I thought it was important to at least talk to some of the key points, starting off, number one will be parking, and moving into a few others that I highlighted from the last meeting. So with that, we prepared this exhibit for this evening, and it's a new exhibit entitled Site Plan Rendering, and has a preparation date of February 5th, 2019. Do you wanna mark this board?
What's our last marking, Lawrence? A? A4 is our last?
So this will be A5. And I have reduced copies, though, Mr. Himmelman will pass out. So as he's handing those out, what I'd like to start with, number one was, there was a discussion on parking, and that was probably the majority of the conversation, going back and forth, with the number of spaces that are provided to the residential. So what we were able to do is go back and rethink how we could gain more parking spaces within the layout. One of the key focal points was an area that is located in the north, northeastern part of the residential development, behind the proposed Chase Bank. And if you look at the exhibit, the previous exhibit, there was a larger landscape area between the buildings and the Chase, but there was also a pretty large island that separated the drive-through lanes to the parking area immediately behind the Chase. So we went to Chase and said, you know what, what if we squeezed that island and made it normal width? It was previously over 20 feet in width, and we said, what if we made it more appropriate, like a five, six-foot wide island, which you would normally see in a situation like this, and they were agreeable to it. So what that did was, it moved the drive-up lanes closer to Chase, and freed up room between the drive-up lanes and the residential, to gain additional parking spaces in the area that I'm pointing on the plan up on the screen. We also took a look at other areas within the main parking field for the residential, spots where we had wider landscape islands at the end of rows, and we were able to gain a spot or two here and there, and it resulted in us increasing the total number of parking spaces from 217, as I testified last time, to 236 within the residential area, okay? So that increases the total number of parking spaces to be approximately six parking spaces over RSIS, so we're actually exceeding RSIS requirements for the residential development. But to go back now to the discussion we had related to parking, the 1.75 per the code, as well as the garage spaces, and how does everything work out with the new calculations in these added spaces? Well, if we take a look at the 52, or sorry, 58 dwelling units that do have the garages, same exact number as I testified last time, that equates to two parking spaces for each one of those units, or 116 parking spaces. If we subtract, actually, I'm gonna take one step back. What we also added into the parking lot, behind Chase, were seven designated spaces for Frostwoods, and we added one parking space for electric charging of, for electric vehicles, okay? And that's, that is the first row of parking spaces directly behind the drive-up lanes for Chase, okay? So that's a total of eight parking spaces for Frostwoods and the electric charging. So let's go back again to the calculations for parking, and the two parking spaces for each of the 58 dwelling units that have the garages, that's 116 spaces. If we subtract the 116 spaces from a total of 228 stalls, and that is the 236 total we have, minus the eight combined stalls for Frostwoods and the electric charging, that's 228 minus 116, equals 112 parking spaces remaining for the balance of the dwelling units, which is 62. If we divide 112 by 62, we get 1.8 parking spaces per unit, okay? So you have 52 units, sorry, 58 units in this plan that exceed the 1.75, they're actually at 2.0, and the balance is at 1.8, okay? That's the, that takes, that, we believe, addresses the Board's concern for the total number of parking spaces within the residential. There was concern next about the distribution of handicap or ADA accessible spaces. We show, we actually added new spaces in between the easterly two buildings, which were not previously there, so we now have spaces in that location, spaces in, and spaces in the two originally proposed locations within the field. Again, to provide better distribution, there's a total of six surface, sorry, there's six surface parking spaces shown in the plan, and as will be testified by our architect, each one of the buildings, and there's five of them, will have a garage unit that is also ADA accessible. So that will bring the total for the number of ADA accessible spaces in this development to 11. We also, I wanna also just talk briefly, and just to get, have the Board understand with the change behind Chase, we were able to expand parking closer to Chase and gain those additional spaces, that includes the frost and electric charging space. You can't see it in the plan here, but we also introduced a walkway from those parking spaces to cross over the drive aisle to the north, and leads to another walkway that'll be on the other side of the drive aisle, to lead, allow people to walk then into Frostwoods at that location. You'll see, though, with the introduction of that, that area change, that there's a new drive aisle here that actually provides for better circulation. It's another point of entry into the residential development, it's not just essentially the one, the two locations favoring the southern end of the site, but now there's one off the northern end of the site as well, so better onsite circulation is also now provided.
Rick, I just want to go back one minute. On the RSIS, the residential site improvement standard, on the parking calculation, could you just run through what the RSIS standard is, what was originally proposed, and what is currently proposed, and just confirmably now, while I with that?
Well, I'll just run through the current, what's currently proposed. So the way RSIS works is, there's a breakdown with respect to the type of unit, whether it be a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, or three-bedroom unit, there's a specific number of spaces in the code that gets attributed to each one of those types of units. So in this case, there are 52 one-bedroom units, which RSIS says 1.8 parking spaces per unit gets applied, or 94 parking spaces. For two-bedroom units, there are 63 in this development, which RSIS says 2.0 per, two spaces per unit, or 126 spaces, and there are, there are five three-bedroom units in this development, where RSIS says 2.1 parking spaces per unit gets placed to those, or 10 total parking spaces. If we add up the 94, 126, and 10, we get 230 parking spaces, where again, 236 are within the field. I will say that we are proposing, for the frost spaces, we are proposing signage there that limits the usage of those spaces to essentially daytime hours. We're showing an eight-to-five usage, because we don't expect it to be used in the middle of the night, and clearly those spaces sitting there are better off being used by the residents in those later hours when they're coming home from work, so that's where we expect those to be fully utilized.
So, Rick, I'd like to just, so your testimony, that at the last year, you indicated that we were not complying with RSIS based upon the plan presented at that time.
That's correct.
And therefore, a waiver would need to be obtained.
That's correct.
And now you're indicating that a waiver would not be required, because we're now complying with the RSIS standard.
I agree, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So the, I talked to the circulation, I wanna touch base on another change, there was discussion about a conflict that was shown in our previous plan. That conflict was a result of traffic behind CVS at the loading area. We showed that traffic, if you were, say, to leave the drive-through lane, you would have to make a left turn and head south towards Old Stage Road. That's in direct conflict with traffic that is heading in off of Old Stage Road, they're directly opposing one another. The simple fix was to take the direction of that traffic and actually drive it to the north, so now someone leaving the drive-up lane will make a right turn and head towards the center of the development, at which time they can head primarily towards Summerhill Road, or recirculate back to Old Stage Road. And actually, that works better for CVS, because as I did touch base in the last meeting, when the truck does pull up, the back end of the truck faces the southwest corner of the building, which is where the loading door is. Lastly, actually, two other things I wanna point out. One, as a result of this plan, we're not changing the amount of trees or vegetation being proposed. All we did is we took the vegetation, there was a larger concentration directly behind the Chase Bank, like I said, behind the, from a point between the drive-up lanes and where the residential parking is now, and we just redistributed the trees throughout, so we're not losing any vegetation as a result of this. But we do increase the previous coverage by 2%. I testified previously, it was 51% was proposed, we go to 53, which is still well under the 65% that's allowed under the code. Last point I wanna bring up, and that would be the next, the next exhibit, there was a couple of points where we talked about the circulation behind CVS, and there was concern about the loading happening, and it blocking off vehicles from being able to pass by that truck, causing maybe an additional conflict. We created this, what's called WB62, which is a wheelbase 62-feet truck circulation exhibit with today's date.
So we would wanna have that introduced in Marb?
Yep. A6?
A6.
Staff, have you guys seen this plan? Okay. So reduced copies of this exhibit are being passed out, and what it simply shows is, we ran the truck on its anticipated route, making a right-hand turn into the site off of Old Stage Road, entering into its position directly behind the CVS, and we showed then another vehicle up against it to the, to the west, driving right by it while it's in its position. So we were hoping that just by showing this, and this will be in the revised site plan set, we will, we will make sure that it is in there for a review by your professionals and for you as well, Board members, upon our resubmission next week, but I just think we would bring that up, since I know that was a point of contention at the last meeting. And that's all I have at this point to run through.
Any Board questions? Yes.
When we spoke last, it was a 58 spots inside, right? So just to get back to the inside, so out of your calculation, you're gonna have spots outside, inside, and you're gonna manage it.
That's correct.
How are you gonna manage it?
It can be done in different ways, I don't know how exactly it's gonna be put into effect, but it could be through number in those spaces, it could be through permitting, permits being handed out. Certainly, there will be designated spots and a lease for those that are taking the garage spaces, and they will know they'll be getting two, so there will be, this is not uncommon, actually, this building and this setup, we've, I personally actually have designed unnumerous occasions, not only for this client, but for others, it's a fairly common setup of having a garage, and it just, it is managed through the managing company or the owner.
Go a little further, we did talk about school buses, we talked about that the last time, the circulation.
Yep.
Visitors, so basically, there's no spots for visitors, and the concern is, it stills over outside into other areas, so I, I don't know, I'm not convinced.
Well, let me, so when you look at RSIS, we're now saying that we're complying with RSIS based on our total. RSIS and its code actually accounts for visitor parking spaces for each one of those units, okay? So a half a parking space for each one of those units is in this calculation, and we can, so that's how, that's how the residential site improvement standards don't say, provide RSIS number plus add visitor spaces. Your code doesn't say, provide 1.75 parking spaces plus add visitor spaces, it's within the number that we're required to calculate, the total number for, for the number of units.
Yeah, I think the issue, and I know the issue is for me, that, and I understand RSIS is a nationally recognized standard, but Eastbrook's a little different in that people move here because of our school system, so people say, ah, there's not gonna be any kids in here, but you know what, that's nonsense, because our experience in town has shown that people do move here, they move in here with kids, they move into a two-bedroom apartment with two kids, so their kids can take advantage of our, of our great school system. So, you know, look, I guess every town feels are special, and I know that we are, but the truth of the matter is, that standards like RSIS, and you know, when Rutgers does a study about how many children are gonna be in a particular development, you can throw those, those standards out the window, because they just don't apply here, you don't have to respond, it's just a statement.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just interject that, I understand your point, I think your concern was several at the last meeting, one was to make sure there was ample parking.
Yes.
Make sure that the onsite circulation worked.
Correct.
And if there weren't conflict movements, and I think both with vehicles accessing and leaving the site, trucks, deliveries, school buses, et cetera, and I think a lot of those issues, and I'll let Mr. Scapinis interject, were discussed at sort of the technical working meeting, and maybe, maybe your professionals might wanna weigh in, because I think the applicant is going through, you know, a thoughtful exercise here to try and address your concerns and some of the other Board members, recognizing that we are somewhat constrained, given the, given the buffer requirements that must be maintained, but maybe, maybe the professionals, your staff and engineers might weigh in on that, because I think it's important that, I know, Mr. Chairman, you rely a lot on your professionals and your staff.
I do.
And I think for the public's edification, I think it would be helpful also, and maybe at that point, you know, Mr. Scapinis might be able to respond as well, so I just threw that out there for discussion.
Well, let me respond real, real briefly, only because I guess A5 and A6 have not been reviewed by our staff until the last 20 minutes, so they need an opportunity to review both of those plans, you know, obviously, the new parking and circulation plan and the turning template, so I wanna, I wanna obviously defer until they have an opportunity to review that, you know, it's possible they may have some, some time tonight to do that, but certainly, you know, they need some time to digest that.
But I do agree, David, that you are constrained, with the amount of stuff you're trying to squeeze out to this site, we are creating some constrained areas, but I appreciate the, the site circulation obviously is better than it was, without a doubt.
And, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Saxton, that's why I prefaced my testimony by saying, look, I understand this is an exhibit, you haven't had the time to digest it, we're gonna, you're gonna have the time prior to the next one, I just wanted to make, you know, be able to present it and show you the direction that we're going, and that we can take care of the comments that were issued at the last meeting, that's all.
And I, and I was not, so in my comments with the chairman, we're not to suggest that your staff, you know, be put on the spot, I just think it's important, as we go through this work in progress, and, and your professional staff has an opportunity to review this, but my only point was, we're not operating in a vacuum.
Right.
We're trying to work at the same time, address your concerns and the other Board members, so.
No, absolutely, this is better than what we saw before, no doubt about it.
Not sad on that, I think.
Not sad on that.
Mr. Chairman, do you still have some concerns on the handicap parking?
Sure.
Want to talk about it?
Yeah, please.
Could you put the previous slide up? The parking store on the lower left side, right there, those handicap spots, are there side doors into these facilities?
Yes, there are.
So those two buildings across the street from there, the handicap people would be entering the building through the side doors?
They can, yes.
I still think those handicap spots should be better distributed, so these people don't necessarily have to go through the side doors. They should be distributed throughout the complex, and by law, they're supposed to be the closest spots to the door. So I'll ask staff to further review that. I'm also concerned with the runs and rises of where those spots are and where those potential people are going to be needing to cross, crossover to get through their apartments. So I'll ask the staff to take a look at that. Thank you, sir.
And the other board questions for this one? Yes. I'm sorry. If you have a question, just say the question, I'm having trouble seeing it.
It's okay. Steve? All right. I also had a couple of questions from last time. And I noticed that you have the maneuvering of the truck through the site, and you've given us an idea how it would traverse through. Is it your suggestion or contention that the only way a truck will come in here now is off of Old Stage Road? Since that might be the only way it can get to that? Or does it come in off of Summer Hill Road and then make some other maneuvers?
It could actually come in off of Summer Hill and turn in and go across the front of the CVS and maneuver to be able to go clockwise around the building in that location. The ease, we picked the easiest, most direct route for that exhibit, but we can show you through our truck turning exhibit when we make the submission, how the truck can make various maneuvers into that location.
And when it's making the maneuver, leaving the loading area, it heads up to the two-way location, as would have been called at the main entrance on Summer Hill Road? And clearly, the maneuver requires it to certainly go into the other lane in order to make that right on turn.
In onsite?
Yeah.
Yes, correct, it would.
And you were obviously, mid-termination, that it will not destroy the tree that you've placed on the corner there of that application?
That is true, yes. We will not allow it to destroy the tree. Yes, we'll keep it out of the termination.
And I know we're supposed to get some testimony regarding how this under-the-building parking or garage arrangement is going to go with the other car in front of it, because I still don't, if you remember, I still don't understand how somebody who has the inner garage is going to have the outer garage and how the maneuvering there is going to happen. And for interior access, or do they have to close the door and come out? Because that adds a lot of other questions, too, in terms of ease of operation and ease of access. Somebody pulls in, and they've talked to their wife on the phone, and she says, well, I'm going to be leaving soon. So he's not going to park his car where he's supposed to, he's going to park his car on one of the other spots, or vice versa, or whatever that arrangement is. And now, all of a sudden, you've got people utilizing spots that theoretically you don't want them to use. I don't know how you police that.
Okay, understood.
So if I understand a little bit more about this under-garage event, it might help.
Okay. We'll provide more information for you.
Thank you.
Other board questions? Staff questions? I'm sorry, Larry, you look quizzed. Do you have a question?
I just want to go back. I know you talked about it at the last meeting.
No, please.
And it was something about the snow removal plan? And I believe the testimony was that it's onsite, that the owner-operator is going to take care of it. Does that also apply for CVS and Chase? Or since they're commercial entities, do they have requirements on their own to do it?
Likely, they're going to have requirements on their own to do it, because they're leasing those areas, they'll be required to remove the snow. But we will be providing, as I noted, we're providing the snow removal plans will identify what's happening in each one of those locations.
And there's going to be no staging of any snow on the property, which means CVS and Chase need to know that as well?
No, I didn't, there may be staging of snow. I mean, there's areas in front of CVS and Chase where snow can go. All right? There are areas in the front parking area that can, where snow can be placed.
Where would that be?
In front of CVS, in the area here.
In the grass area?
Yeah, yeah. It could be pushed off. And also, there's some areas off to the side of Chase where there could be smaller areas. I mean, actually, southwest, and it would probably be one. But we'll show it in the plan, we'll show the amount, and we'll also make note as far as what happens when the snow can't be placed any further. In fact, it will be hauled off, as I testified last time.
Where you're pointing now, in that grass area, then you get into issue of how high is it going to be, and now you have site issues and people on Summer Hill Road.
As I mentioned, there's limited areas, and there will be the point where snow will have to be removed off-site.
And similarly, I know you, it's just been presented and our staff has not seen it, but as Mr. Phillips said, I'm really having a hard time with the vision of this WB62 driving through the site the way you propose it. Its ability to come down Old Stage Road westbound, staying in its lane, it looks like it's on the center line or straddling the center line. You're having to make a right turn in, and then it's pulling in behind CVS, coming back out, in essence, making a 90-degree turn. Your template shows that the rear of the trucks at 45 degrees, the front's at 90. I would just ask that staff truly look at that, because it looks to be really tight.
This is the first time we're looking at it.
John, is your mic on? Because I'm having trouble with your apartment. There you go.
I'm sorry. Yeah, so I just was reiterating that we had, looking at the small-scale plan, we had the same concerns. When we review the full-scale plans, we'll be looking more closely and looking to that opportunity.
Correct. Because the truck, as we're saying now, the one we're talking about, when it's making the right, it's actually in the oncoming lane of the people coming in west. Okay.
Why don't you flip to the other slide, please? Mr. Saccas? There you go.
Right, the truck in the middle.
Comment, Larry?
No, I was going to say, the truck that's shown in the middle was the one I was referring to, that basically the cab's at a 45-degree angle, the front is 90 degrees to the east, which is actually in the oncoming lane of traffic that's coming into the development off of Summer Hill.
Yes. So staff is going to take a hard look at that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
It's a concern. Mr. Sax, is that it? Mr. Rovman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sax, I know you have.
Yeah, just as a follow-up to Mr. Rovman's question about a snow removal plan, is there a written snow removal plan in place now for this application?
No.
All right. I would like to see something, so that our staff can review it. And I think we need to know how the residential developer is going to handle snow removal, whether it's going to be placed into a dump truck and carted off-site. We need to know these specifics, how CVS is going to handle snow removal, and how Chase is going to handle snow removal. I mean, to just dump it on some of the green space that's on Summer Hill Road, you're right, could cause some site issues on Summer Hill Road, could cause some drainage issues on Summer Hill Road and at the intersection of Old Stage and Summer Hill. So, you know, certainly, Mr. Heimlich, if that can be provided?
Sure. I mean, I think it's fair to say that from an operational standpoint, I don't think CVS or Chase would do anything to repeat their operations, and I'm pretty sure they have a snow removal plan, happy to get it here.
No, but I'm concerned more so that we're going, you know, I just heard your testimony that, you know, we're going to have six additional spaces over the RSIS, but I want to make sure that those six spaces aren't going to be plowed in. I don't want to see a scenario where, you know, and I'll just use the Midstate Mall, you know, we don't have any snow this winter, but, you know, in past heavy snowfall winters, you know, we've had 30-foot, 40-foot piles of snow in the Midstate Mall and the Brunser Square Mall that have been there until May. I don't think we need to have that on this site, so there's got to be some kind of specific written plan as to how.
I understand, and certainly, within the management organization, I'm confident there is, and we'll provide that to you, also will provide, from an operational standpoint, what Chase and CVS handles snow removal.
On the snow removal, I really want a detailed plan, because putting snow in a truck and trucking it away is a very costly operation. So there's that first concern. The other concern is if you're going to do that, you're going to, you hear snowstorms coming, you're going to put a loader somewhere in one of these parking spots. You're going to stage it there, or you're going to put the dump trucks there to start moving things off-site. We all know that these loaders are awfully difficult to move around when the roadway is icy and slick. Also, my other concern is, you're going to probably put more salt down than necessary because you want your residents to be safe. Now, this product, this snow, is going to be filled with calcium chloride, and it's going to be filled with salt by products. So I'd be concerned of where you're going to dump this, because I certainly don't want you dumping it in East Brunswick.
Thank you, Mr. Sax.
Yes, Port Brunswick.
And one other thing, Mr. Heimlich, when you have the snow removal plan, when it snows, I'm going to guess the majority of the spots are going to have cars in them, which means when the plows come through, or the snow pushers come through, everywhere, they're basically plowing the roadway. Now it's going to stop snowing, the cars are going to come out. I think the applicant needs to provide some information as to how they then remove all the remaining snow that's between all the cars, because are they going to have their onsite maintenance men shoveling the snow? Where are they then going to put that? So part of the operations need to be the snow that is between the cars, that obviously they're going to want to remove for the residents, but where's it going to go?
I understand, and I think we can provide that detail for you, you know. Fortunately for the applicant, we're talking about a company that has managed an immense amount of real estate in the northeast, so they, this isn't their first opportunity that they're having a review in this issue. So I'm confident that we can provide those details and satisfy the board's concerns.
Are they going to also plow the driveways in front, if you're counting the car spots in front of the garage?
Absolutely.
Are they going to plow the residence driveway?
Yeah, they would have to under the lease. Yeah, so they will, there's an organized plan, and we could provide that information. I understand your concerns, I'm not saying they're not fair points, but I think after you see what we're going to submit, I think you'll be confident that we can implement that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Rovman?
If they could prepare a second WB62 truck circulation exhibit with the truck entering from Summer Hill and then passing in front of the CVS, as they testified, so that we can review that when we review this plan, that would be very helpful.
I'd also would like a fire truck plan, a ladder truck, was pretty good. And it would be perhaps specific to what we have in East Brunswick and in Spotswood for mutually.
There'll be part of the set.
Any other questions for this witness?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, could we just get a qualification on the plugging sites? You mentioned that there's one.
Can you repeat the question?
The plugging for electric cars.
There's one, yes. There's one location in the row of spaces that are installed.
On the other?
Yeah, behind the Chase Bank.
So there's one, and how many total dwellings do we expect to have here?
There's 200, there's, I'm sorry, 120.
120. Is there some standard that we believe that is going to be one plug-in capability for 120 homes?
I'm not aware of a standard. I'm not aware of a standard in any code requiring the number, based on the numbers.
So there is no requirement?
Not that I'm aware of.
There may not be a requirement, but I can tell you that before the New Jersey Legislature right now, it's a very aggressive piece of legislation to really encourage electric charging stations, and are mandating people like my employer, the New Jersey Turnpike Authority, to put an aggressive number of charging stations at all our service areas and restrooms. That's certainly the future we're looking at, and I give your points a lot of attention.
Mr. Chairman, we could take a look at that, to Mr. Phillips' question also, about adding some additional charging stations, to see logistically where that could be located without affecting parking or onsite circulation or other issues. So we could take a look at that.
Possibly adding some into the garages. I mean, some of these cars are very nice, expensive cars that these people want, and they do live in these types of residences.
And that actually is something we do now, the applicant does now, and a fair point. And I believe that that's something that will likely occur.
Chair? Yeah, I'm sorry. Chair?
Sure. Yeah, Mr. Sax brought up another point, and we have not reviewed this plan for parking. The applicant has came in, we had a technical review meeting, I thought it was very positive, there were some good suggestions made. But we have not had an opportunity to review the accessibility of some of these additional parking spaces. If you recall, at the original plan, we did have some concerns with how various parking spaces were going to be accessed. So even though the testimony is that so many spaces are being provided on the plan, with our review, there's a possibility that some of those spaces may, we may recommend that be eliminated because of accessibility issues. So just wanted to point that out.
John, just one thing, I would appreciate you not compliment Mr. Sax, he has an outside ego. We've known each other since sixth grade.
That's what happens when you're ahead in high school.
One other question, and I know we're going to get to the traffic study, it says September 12th, 2018. You have changes on, I'm struggling with the conversation we're having, and actually, this picture actually makes it even worse. Is this taken into account? Because the traffic is going to be tough ready. Now you have trucks going in opposite lanes of traffic, cutting it off.
Mr. Peregoi will talk to the circulation. If it impacts his study, you're not.
Yeah, I'd like to make sure.
You have more questions for this witness? Mr. Heimlich?
Chairman Taylor, I think you have no other questions, so obviously, Mr. Saccas will be at the next meeting as well. And as I indicated, as he indicated, we're going to be submitting revised plans to allow your board and your staff, your professional staff, to review those. I guess the next meeting would be September 20, I'm sorry.
About February?
Yeah, February 27th, so we will have to get those in, in timely order, which we will do.
Has Mr. Saccas covered all of his engineering testimony? I just want to make sure that.
I have, he has, other than getting to technical recommendations.
Okay.
Pretty mature.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, our next witness is Craig Peregoi from Dynamic Traffic, and he is our traffic consultant. We would need to have him obviously sworn in.
And just could you repeat the name?
Craig Peregoi.
Please raise your right hand and swear. You swore to tell the truth all too softly, John?
Yes, I did.
State your name, spell your last name, and give us a bit of your CV.
Sure. Name is Craig Peregoi, P-E-R-E-G-O-Y, with Dynamic Traffic, business address 245 Main Street, Chester, New Jersey. I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Virginia Tech. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. Been working as a traffic engineer for almost 19 years now, and I appear pretty much on a nightly basis in front of plants and zoning boards. Let me guess this.
Have you testified here before?
I've been in East Brunswick before, I think it was the zoning board, though.
Well, welcome to the board. Yeah, we're happy to accept this next question.
Thank you, Chairman Taylor. Peregoi, it's my understanding that under your oversight, you have prepared a traffic impact study that was submitted as part of this application, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Would you just go through your findings and discussions in that report, and obviously your conclusions as it relates to this particular application?
Sure. Let me put the first slide back up if you'll use it. Let me put the first slide back up a little easier. Okay, I think we're all pretty familiar with the circulation by now, so we won't go through all that, that sort of information. Obviously, we are on the frontage of a county road, Summer Hill Road is a county road. Old Stage Road is not a county road, but the county does retain jurisdiction along the entire length of that turn lane along Old Stage Road, so our entire frontages are both Middlesex County roadways. So we began looking at this project in consultation with Middlesex County, and how do we, how do we get the access to work? Because obviously, it's their jurisdiction, and it's up to them. So we've met with them on several occasions, and worked extensively to come up with this access plan. There were a few suggestions that they had, and a few, obviously, issues that they brought to light to us at the beginning of the process. The first one being, obviously, the queue length in the PM peak hour, weekday evening, you see a long queue length along Old Stage Road, it's one of the reasons they put that left turn lane in there. That was one of the items brought up. They also noted that the right turn lane on Summer Hill Road is often inaccessible because of the queue length in the through lane on Summer Hill Road blocking it, which is another item that they brought up. And they noted that the office building that's there today, when it was fully occupied and generating more traffic, a lot of people went to make the left out on the Summer Hill, remember the driveway to the office is down in this location, it's much closer to the intersection. When vehicles were making that left out, they were sort of doing it in two stages, and pulling out into that gore area behind the left turn lane for the signal, waiting there, and then making that second move to head northbound on Summer Hill. So essentially, those were the, the items that they pointed out that we should take a look at, and we came up with a few solutions to those. Obviously, the Old Stage Road, queue length is, is one of the primary concerns, and their suggestion was to eliminate the left turnout. This way, we keep any of our traffic from adding to that queue length and, and coming into that lane. You also eliminate the possibility of somebody trying to make that left out and sticking out and blocking the left turn lane. So that's where that right turn only came from on Old Stage Road, that's where the restriction to the left out came from, to keep our traffic outside of that queue. The use of the gore area and the left turnout, the suggestion was to provide this two-way center left turn lane, that does a couple of things. It allows our left turning, entering, entering traffic to pull out of the main through line on Summer Hill Road. It's gonna allow the same thing for the residents across the street, there are a number of homes on the east side of Summer Hill, they'll now be able to use that center left turn lane to pull out of the through lanes to make the left turn in. And it'll help, again, both left turn ingress and egress, and now, instead of sitting in that gore area, they have a full lane width to make that two-stage maneuver, which is an appropriate use, it's a legal use of that left turn lane. Lastly, we wanted to pull a driveway as far away from the intersection as possible as compared to where it is today. This will allow that right turn lane to be able to open up a little bit sooner, so now you have a two-lane section southbound on Summer Hill, much farther up from the traffic signal, so that through queue will block the right turn lane less frequently. So those were the key points that we, we discussed with the county, and came up with in terms of improving the access to the property that exists today, and, and making some improvements to the operation along Summer Hill Road with that two-way center left turn lane. And all those suggestions are included in the traffic impact analysis, and as you can see on the site plans. Now, in terms of the traffic analysis, what we've done is take traffic counts at the intersection, the signalized intersection of Old Stage and Summer Hill, of course. We also took, wanted to take a look at the seven-eleven driveway, just to see how it interacts with our proposed driveway, so we took, took traffic counts at that location too. And what we're looking for are the busiest times of the day, and that's weekday morning, rush hour time period, weekday evening, rush hour time period, and then that Saturday midday shopping time period. So we have three peak times we're looking at. So we took our counts from seven to nine on weekday morning, four-thirty to six-thirty on weekday evening, and then from eleven AM to two PM on a Saturday. Now, those counts were taken back when we initially started this project in May of two thousand and seventeen. Since then, obviously, we've now come to the new board, we wanna make sure that nothing's changed out there. We took updated traffic counts just a couple of weeks ago, in January of two thousand and nineteen, though volumes to be very, very similar. In fact, a little bit lower than they were in May of two thousand and seventeen, but for, for the most part, substantially similar.
And, and those counts were, were taken at what time, what times of the day?
Same, uh, seven to nine AM on weekday, four-thirty to six-thirty, also on weekday evening, and then from eleven AM to two PM on a Saturday. Those, those capture the busiest times of, not only the roadway, but when you see residential development at its busiest, and obviously, on Saturdays, CVS might be at its busiest. Because we're looking for, basically, the worst-case scenario, we're looking for when, when is the road generating its most traffic, and when is the site generating its most traffic? And that encompasses those timeframes. What we do is, within each of those count periods, isolate a single hour, the single busiest hour in the weekday morning, morning peak hour, the evening, evening peak hour, and then the Saturday, the Saturday peak hour. So we're finding that one busiest hour that the roadway is at its busiest. We're gonna then assume that all of our site traffic is at its busiest at the exact same time, so we're looking at a peak-on-peak worst-case scenario from a traffic impact perspective, so we can really analyze that worst-case scenario. And what we wanna look at is, what's, we sort of wanna look into a crystal ball, what it's gonna look like in the future if this project is developed versus if it is not developed? Right now, you have an existing office building on the site, it's partially vacant, it's not generating traffic as, as it used to. So certainly, you know, account for the fact that if this didn't happen, that office building could be re-rented, re-leased, and reopened. So that's part of the, the no-build scenario. In other words, if we don't build this in the future, we have an operating office building of some forty-one thousand square feet on the property. Now, in order to project how much traffic that might generate, I, and I use this for what we're proposing in for the office building, we use the Institute of Transportation Engineers' trip generation manual. It's a compilation of traffic counts taken of land uses throughout the country, and we're able to use that based on the land uses that are proposed and are existing, and the size then, to determine how much traffic would be generated. It's basically the, the industry standard that traffic engineers use to forecast traffic generation. So we have those two scenarios, we have scenario one, the no-build scenario, the existing traffic volumes that we counted in, plus a growth rate, a background growth rate, New Jersey DOT publishes an annual background growth rate in this area to one percent. So we bump those up by one percent, and then we add on what that office would be doing if it was fully occupied. That's, that's scenario one, that's the no-build scenario. The build scenario is obviously what we're proposing, we back that existing office building, traffic out of there, and overlay this traffic. Now, we have multiple uses on the site, so when I refer to the ITB manual, I'm looking at the residential component of the site, the residential uses, bank, and the pharmacy. They each have their own data that I'm able to use to project the traffic lines for each of them. Now, there's a couple of unique things when you have a multi-use site like this. Not all of the traffic generated by all those uses is necessarily external to the roads. Obviously, somebody may stop at the ATM at the bank, visit the pharmacy, and then go home. People who live in the residences or residences are obviously in the neighborhood of the pharmacy and use the bank. So you have some component of the internal interaction. There is a methodology to calculate the amount of that, I didn't do that. I assumed that everybody is going on to the roadway network, I just added those numbers up. No internal capture, no internal interaction, again, trying to get to that worst-case scenario, or that highest amount of traffic. Another phenomenon is that these uses aren't necessarily gonna peak at the same time. The busiest hour of the day for the residential use may not be the busiest hour for the CVS or for the bank, but again, for my analysis purposes, looking at the worst-case scenario, I'm assuming that those are all happening at the same time. CVS is busiest hour, same time as the bank, same time as the residential, same time as the road. So again, we're looking at the highest possible hourly interaction between existing traffic lines and the volumes generated by the site. Another phenomenon to look at is, particularly for the retail use, not, this would not apply to the residential, is pass-by traffic. CVS wants to be on this corner because it's a busy corner, they're gonna draw in traffic that's passing by. Same with the bank. It's not gonna generate new, completely all-new traffic to the area, it's gonna attract who's already driving by, somebody stops on the way up to or from work, to stop at the CVS, stop at the ATM, stop at the bank. The ITE publishes data for the percentage of traffic that is pass-by in nature, and I've applied that for the bank and the CVS, but in my experience, especially in this loca, in this type of location here in New Jersey, I think that pass-by number's gonna be high. More convenience, there's a number of CVSs in town, there's a number of banks in town, and we have had your congestion, traffic in New Jersey, so you have a higher component, I think, of pass-by traffic than the national standard, but I apply that national standard, so I'm bringing in more new traffic to the area in my analysis, and I think you're really gonna see, but again, the theme is, look at that worst-case scenario, test the worst-case scenario. So now what we do is run what's called a capacity analysis, and that's based on the Highway Capacity Manual. It's a, basically, mathematical equations based on the traffic signal timing, the number of lanes, the lane width, where stop signs are located, how much traffic volume makes certain turning movements, and we're able to use that to calculate an average delay per vehicle, which is then related to a level of service that you heard Mr. Hillman refer to, which sort of gives a, sort of gives a grade to those ranges of delay. But really, what I'm gonna look at is the changing delay that's created between what we're proposing versus what the existing office building would, would generate. That's that comparison between the no-build and the build. And essentially, if you look at all the traffic movements at the adjacent intersection, the maximum increase in delay for any of those movements is about three and a half seconds per vehicle, which is not substantial. None of the levels of service for any of those movements changed during those weekday peak hours, the morning and evening peak hour, we have one level of service change in the report, as a matter of fact, and it's a Saturday southbound left turn, increased by eight seconds per vehicle, goes from level of service C to a D. But again, it's on the Saturday, which is certainly less critical from a traffic volume standpoint as compared to the weekdays. So no level of service change in the weekdays, again, maximum increase in delay for any movement is three and a half seconds. The overall intersection, which Mr. Hillman referred to in his opening statement, stays the same between no-build and build conditions. Queue lengths, obviously, a little more critical here because you have one-lane approaches. Essentially, the, the, in the morning, you have the queuing going northbound and westbound, and the evening is going southbound and eastbound, where you have those extended queues. We add approximately one and a half, the calculation comes out to one and a half vehicles in a maximum to that queue length on Summer Hill Road coming southbound. Now, if you, if you think about it, we're sort of reversing the flow of traffic. Residential traffic is arriving in the evening, whereas office traffic is exiting, exiting in the evening. The evening is where you have the more extended queues north, along, along Summer Hill Road to the north, and along Old Stage Road to the west, blocking site driveways occasionally. But our traffic is primarily coming in at that time, whereas an office building traffic is going out at that time. Which, I think that sort of reverse flow helps the situation a little bit. But again, impacts to the adjacent intersection, minimal increases in the delay, I think you're gonna see a little bit of improvement out there by, with the fact that you can now pull some of this right.
Well, respectful here of everyone, thank you.
You're gonna see a little bit of improvement in the fact that we can pull some of that right turning traffic out of the through queue lanes on Summer Hill, and also, the two-way center left turn lane is gonna make it a lot easier for the residents across the street to get in and out, and it's also gonna make it easier for our site access to enter and exit. And again, keep in mind, we're not adding to probably the, the most critical movement, the eastbound movement on Old Stage Road, we're restricting that turning movement out, so everybody would use the traffic signal to go east on Old Stage Road rather than try to make that left turnout and add to this, add to this queue. So from a traffic impact standpoint, from a traffic impact standpoint, when you compare future conditions, again, with and without this project going forward, we, we, we reactivating that office building versus we propose this, there's not a substantial traffic impact to the adjacent intersection. The site driveways work at acceptable levels of service. Your police department reviewed our traffic before, they, they agree with our findings in their, in their review, and obviously, your board engineer has, has reviewed this too, they have a few comments that primarily got with the circulation on the site, I don't believe the traffic impact part of it as much. That's it from the traffic perspective, I don't know if I wanna stop there and then touch on the parking or keep going.
Let me just, let me just raise two issues. The no-build is not what's there now. The no-build is that site with a fully occupied office building.
Correct.
Now, that's never gonna happen, because first of all, we all know that the real estate, office space real estate market isn't what it once was, it's a functionally obsolete building. So when you're looking at the impact between what's there now, and what it will be under this development, and I appreciate that you did look at maximum numbers, it's not a true look, it's not a true picture, because that site's never gonna have a full office building, just, the economics of office buildings aren't that anymore. The other thing that disturbed me a little bit that you said was, you know, you said that, well, only one movement gets downgraded its level of service, but it's a Saturday morning, it's not that important. I live on that side of town, that's when I'm out there running all my errands on a Saturday morning, the dry cleaners, the shop, right, that I shop in, so I'm not sure that I would categorize it as not that important, because it's only a Saturday morning. I'm sure that's what a lot of us are, are, are supporting all our small businesses in East Brunswick.
Okay, I, I'm gonna, let me address both of those things. I, I don't mean to say that the Saturday is less important, but it's less critical from the traffic volume, there's far fewer traffic volumes going through that intersection on a Saturday than the morning and evening. I think we can all agree that weekday evening, for this point, is probably the most critical.
Well, Mr. Paragoy, isn't it fair to say that the traffic patterns may be different on Saturday, people aren't leaving the site perhaps at AM or PMP, and, and the existing intersection impact may be somewhat different?
Well, but we still end up with a downgrade in performance level, so that's really the bottom line.
I, I agree.
So.
Chairman Taylor, if I could just address.
I mean, I go to work in the other direction.
Right.
And on a Saturday morning, because I go in this direction, so to me, it's more important, you know? Yes.
I have a couple of comments if I might.
Yeah, I mean, I could, if you wanted to answer, okay.
Yes, I think, let me, let me address this a little bit, bit further, because I, I do understand your point. Also, on the Saturday, the ITE doesn't publish any pass-by data for the pharmacy, so I'm assuming that everybody who goes to CVS on, on a Saturday never goes to this area and now shows up again, so it's a little extra conservative on the Saturday as well, to, to, to address that. And in terms of the degradation of the level of service, it goes from a C to a D, it's not going, it's not a failing condition, we're not making unacceptable level of service, so I just wanna clarify that a little bit. And now, in terms of the comparison of the existing office building versus what's proposed, it is possible that that office building could be renovated and reused. It's also possible that it could be used as a medical office building, which is permitted in the zone, and it would generate more traffic than this, and it would be all new traffic, and all throughout the day, rather than just isolated in peak hours, so that's also another possibility that you could deal with, but I just look at it as if it were a general office building. And lastly, like I said, that evening peak hour, I think, is the most critical. This office building is only generating two trips less than the ITE for a full office building during the evening. So really, that evening peak hour is essentially a comparison to the existing, and we're adding two more cars to the roadway network to get it up to that IT number.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just interject one, one second, I just wanted for your, to follow up with your question on the vacancy, if you will, issue. My client indicated that there is, right now, is a termination agreement, and the existing tenant will be vacating, I think it's February twenty-second?
Correct.
Okay. And I guess, you know, so there will be opportunities to lease that office building, I think, in addition to medical office or other permitted uses, I mean, it's possible that you could, it could become some type of tech center, where you could have IT firms in there, there are a variety of uses that could occupy the building and, and therefore have different types of impacts from a traffic perspective, so I don't want there, I, I think it's, it's fair to say, you know, that we can't just assume that that building will be vacant indefinitely.
Correct.
And I just wanted to make that point.
Now, are there any questions specific to what this witness just said, because I wanna...
I think Mr. Schmidt had a question.
More than that, Ted has another question.
Yeah, I, I have a couple of comments, but, looking at this whole traffic situation, you're a traffic engineer, I'm not, so you have a lot of expertise. I probably cross this intersection four or five times a day in all directions. And I have for the last forty years. And I will tell you, as a matter of fact, that there are, that there are extensive lines of traffic on Summer Hill and Old Stage at certain times of the day, especially, especially after three o'clock. How do I know this? Because I sit, okay? So I know that. Now, here you have a project that's going to throw off about two hundred and forty residential automobiles in addition to the traffic generated by the, the pharmacy, which concerns me more than the bank. This pharmacy is all over East Park, but they're busy all day long. Everybody is running around getting prescriptions all day and picking them up and so forth. So that's going to generate a lot of traffic into that. So in my view, the level of surface, I think, which has been testified that it's not going to be impaired below, I think it was the level E in the statement, I find that totally incredible, totally unbelievable. That is, that is not going to happen. If there is a number below F, it would believe, it would be below. Comment number two. The exiting from this project onto Summer Hill Road, which you propose a left turns over there. I, I cannot imagine a more difficult or dangerous left turn in this thing this time. I say that because in order for a motorist to make a left turn coming out of this, of those two, uh, driveways there, they're going to have to cut, they're going to have to cut through three lanes of traffic. Two lanes on Summer Hill going south and one lane going north, which means that they're going to have to break through those tra, those lines. And they would have to depend on motorists in effect letting them in. I, I think the police are going to be really busy at this exiting situation with that left turn. I think that is, is, is an extremely dangerous proposal. I, I cannot imagine how people, and especially the pharmacy, you have a lot of elderly people. On the whole, I think elderly people, uh, utilize pharmacies probably more than younger people. I worry about elderly drivers coming out of this intersection, coming out of, uh, CVS particularly, and then making a left to go north on Summer Hill Road. That is a going to be a world-class disaster, okay? And I respect your expertise and, and you're, you're a knowledgeable man and, you know, and you did it, uh, I'm sure, a professional report. But being a resident of this area, and I think I've lived closer to this, this intersection than anybody on this board, okay? And I'm, I'm more familiar with it. And, you know, I, as a, as a board member, I don't want to do anything to hurt people in my community. And I also don't want to do anything to hurt people in the neighboring community, which is Spotswood. They're neighbors. They're going to be impacted because there's a lot of business on Summer Hill Road below Old Stage. Uh, there's pharmacies down in that direction, there's factories, there's a, a couple of, there's a major shopping center on the, at the intersection, the so-called ShopRite, uh, shopping center, Spotswood Shopping Center. I mean, there's a lot of people coming and going. And I find that that particularly, this entire application, that left turn problem to me is, um, going to be a major issue as far as I'm concerned. I think it's, I think it's a very, very dangerous plan. And I know that, not as a traffic expert, but as a resident, as well as a, a board member, I worry about that. And I see, uh, police cars, uh, frequenting that area. And speaking just from my own personal experience, I really understand.
And I'm not suggesting that this intersection works perfectly. It doesn't. It clearly has extended queuing. My charge is to make sure that what we're proposing isn't going to make it substantially worse. We're not going to make it better. We're not going to be able to fix it. We're going to make slight improvements that I think are going to help a little bit. But it, it's not something that we can completely solve on the back of this property. I just have to make sure it's not going to be worse. You mentioned.
I understand what you said. I respectfully disagree. I think it's going to be significantly worse.
Mr. Paragoy, maybe we could just step back, maybe because you're, you were going through, uh, your testimony, uh, and I appreciate that, to get all of the information on the record. But if we could just dial back for a minute and go over the, uh, the meetings you had with the county.
Well, before you dial back.
No, I want to address Mr. Schmidt's, I was trying to address his point on the, on the issue of the turning movements, Mr. Chairman, if you will allow me.
Yes. And that's what I was going to say.
Right.
We have a couple more important.
Uh, sorry. If you could just, if you could just go back and discuss your meetings with the county, what the county's concerns were at the intersection and what specific, I know you can, you summarized those improvements, but maybe you can go back and sort of work, work us through that a little bit closer. Because Mr. Schmidt, I think, was raising a concern about the left turn movement onto Summer Hill. And, and I think that was an issue you had discussed with the county.
Yes, that was a concern that the county shared as well. That's one of the reasons why we're pulling that driveway back. We're moving it farther from the intersection. You only have to cross one lane in each direction when you're coming out. It opens to two lanes beyond the driveway, which it's going to do now farther from the intersection. So you're going to have more storage at the intersection to hopefully bring that queue length down. The two-way center left turn lane, also suggested by the county, allows people to make that left turn in two stages now, which makes it an easier left turn movement. It provides a, a buffer, a gap between the two, the northbound and southbound traffic. So now, when I make a left turn out, I have the ability to look for a gap to the left, pull into the center turn lane, then look to, for a gap to the right, which makes it a safer and easier movement to make. And again, part of that was based on what your concerns were, that left turn being difficult. This was the best way to make it work better. It also is going to help the neighbors across the street make the lefts into and out of their driveway as well, which is an added, added benefit to it. And again, pulling that driveway farther from the intersection makes it less likely to be blocked by the queuing as opposed to what it is today. So that was all discussed with the county. You also mentioned about the number of parking spaces, the number of vehicles dumping out. This doesn't all happen at once. People don't all leave for work at the same exact time. I looked at the busiest hours of the day. I agree with you. CVS is active all day. But I looked at when its time was the busiest and assumed it was the same time that the intersection was busy. So I did look at that worst case scenario. So any other times of day, yes, it'll be active, but it will have less of an impact than what I came up with in my report. And I, I just, your, your police department has reviewed our traffic report. I'll just read from their, uh, their letter. They say, "The Department of Public Safety is in agreeance with the traffic study in that the additional vehicular volume generated by the proposed, proposed project does not appear to have a significant impact on the operating conditions on the adjacent streets, Summer Hill Road and Old Stage Road. In addition, the proposed change from roadway's current design to a two-way center left turn lane does improve the ability for motorists to make either left turn movements into or left turn movements out of the proposed driveways at the site." So they're in agreeance with our report in that left turn, in the two-way center left turn lane. The only suggestion that they had is to restrict the left turns out of the northern driveway. They're concerned about the proximity of these two driveways. They're two hundred feet apart, and I think dispersing that left turn movement over the two driveways is a better scenario. But overall, in general, that first paragraph, I think, sums up what their finding is with this, uh, this traffic reporting application.
But it also states, unfortunately, the department still has reservations about the project. Too focal with Summer Hill Road. You, you read the one paragraph and not the next sentence.
Right. That, well, they summarized it. They want us to restrict that.
Mr. Sacks, if I could just interject. The court reporter is having a difficult time getting all the testimony down. And I respect that people want to applaud, but we need to keep that to a minimum because she's having difficulty getting the, uh, the testimony down, which is kind of affecting her.
No, uh, Mr. Himmlman had a point.
That's a fair, that's a fair.
And, and I made that comment at the last meeting. So, yeah, let's, let's refrain from applause. You may be very comfortable with what was said by a board member or by a witness, but you can, you don't have to express it that way. It's important that we get a, an accurate record, uh, for this proceeding and for future proceedings. So, yeah, let's minimize any comments, minimize any applause, minimize any booing because that's only going to impair the record. Thank you.
Back to Sacks.
I have a question, Mr. Paragoy. Um, we have a traffic impact study. Is this, this is yours that you produced?
Yes.
Okay. So if, maybe you could orient me, um, on the page, I guess it's figure four and figure five. Uh, but before I do that, could you clarify how far up Summer Hill Road this three-lane event is now proposed?
The, where the site driveway is located, oh, of the, the, the northbound, I guess.
Coming down Summer Hill Road from Ryder's Lane, where does this third lane begin?
Right at the edge of our property. You see it at the top of the page there.
Anybody who, um, who has been in the queue, maybe up to Central Avenue, is going to look to grab into this lane as fast as possible if they want to go into the 7-Eleven or go into the ShopRite or make a right and make a turn onto Old Stage. Would that be fair?
It's, it would be illegal to travel as a through lane on the left turn lane. I, I'm certain some people will try to do that.
If you made the two-lane thing where, if you made it, people are going to use it. Now, you have restrictions in that lane?
Yes, for left turns only. And you are going to have.
For left turn only, I agree.
Right.
That's what I'm saying. So you've got people who immediately upon arriving after they've been in a queue that goes up the hill, they're going to grab that leftmost lane because they want to either go into the 7-Eleven, they want to make a left-hand turn on Old Stage Road to go into the ShopRite or just go straight. Would that be fair?
Yes.
And they're allowed to do that?
Isn't used to make left turns, yes.
Okay. So now, getting back to something that was mentioned a few minutes ago, the person coming out who is going to be using that two-lane or two-way road is going to be coming into people who are getting out of a queue and now want to make a turn. And they've got yet another person who's going to be interfering. So there's a conflict zone right there, Terry.
Well, there's a conflict, there's, you're going to go left out against the, the southbound through traffic. You have a stop sign at the driveway to yield to that.
And then they're going to go through the queue that's coming down the hill. And now they're going to go into a lane that people theoretically could move faster because there'll be less cars in it. So now they've got another obstacle they have to potentially worry about. In here, you've got two, you've got a sixteen going straight on figure four, and you've got sixteen.
I'm sorry, at the traffic light, yes. I thought you were talking about the traffic, at the traffic light, yes.
All right. So now, during this peak period, you're going to have sixteen, twenty-five cars going into the queue with the three lanes that we already described, making the maneuver going across two other lanes to make a left-hand turn onto Old Stage Road. Is that correct?
Yes, they, they would make a right turn out and then get into the left turn and then make a right, yes.
And that's sixteen cars that have to do that maneuver during these peak, peak periods. And that won't create any additional issues?
No, sixteen over an hour is very small.
And you've got also on your past generated site trips, you've got two people leaving, doing the same maneuver, and one of them is making the turn. Is that correct?
On the pass by, yes.
And I just want to get clear that that is an acceptable activity for, during the peak rush?
Yes, to make a left, to, to make a right out of Summer Hill and a left at the traffic signal, yes. And the next, figure six is the total, sites are seventeen. Yeah, the two together, seventeen.
Okay, so you've got them added up. So that's the total of what you think is going to be generated out of here during the peak time?
Yes. Thank you.
We're going to take a break. You know, Debbie does a wonderful job creating transit tonight. My fingers are hurting watching her. And, uh, Chairman needs to take a break, so we're going to be about ten minutes. Sorry I ran a little over, but look at the bright side. You don't have to listen to our president. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let my voice show a little bit. Okay, um, here's what we're going to do. You had some, you had some questions. Okay, so we're going to take a couple of questions, then we'll let you finish your testimony. And then, Mr. Watson, do you have some questions?
I do, yes.
Okay. So that's how, that's how we're going to proceed. And don't worry again, we're going to have public portion tonight. Yes, Mr. Prescott? Really? Well, I'm anxious to hear it, sir. That's okay.
I'm not going to repeat enough, but I think I actually live close to Hather than you do. And it's almost, what, what I can't understand is why you picked June 24th. The school is out.
That was only for the Saturday.
I agree.
Yeah.
Did you personally go down there?
Yes, I've been there a number of times.
You were down there and you did these counts?
I didn't do the specific traffic counts, but I've, I've been in the intersection a number of times.
But were you down there during the times that these were taken?
The weekday evening count, I was there, yes.
And on the weekday evening?
Which was in May, when school's open.
Well, it's also later day. But when did, why did you stop at six thirty?
Generally, the ITE tells us to look at four PM to six PM as the evening peak. I found that it's almost never as early as four. So we do four thirty to six thirty. Now, if the volumes are still as high at six thirty, we may extend it. But in this case, we had hit that, that peak hour.
See, I, I trouble, I trouble with that because I'm turning in on bus or sale or interview, and it's somewhat backed up already, and it's like seven o'clock. So I don't understand. And I'm coming down Summer Hill. I'm almost backed by the other 7-Eleven.
The day that we did the counts, the, the time was dwindling down, and just today's.
Were you personally were there doing these counts?
Uh, during the evening, I was, I was on site supervising the counters. But we have different people who do traffic counts. Seven o'clock today, I drove through the intersection, I went straight down Summer Hill. There was no.
Mr. Paragoy, isn't it, Miss Schools, uh, could you explain, Mr. Paragoy, could you explain the process? Because obviously, there's a counter that's put out, and you're typically not there while the counter is working. Is that fair to say?
Yes, that's correct.
Why don't you just explain the process so the board and the public understands?
The counters have boards that click with a clicker, basically, to click each turning movement. We count in fifteen-minute intervals throughout that time period, and that's how we get to that peak hour. We find the four busiest fifteen-minute intervals in a row. That's the peak hour. So that's what's happening during the traffic count time periods.
I just respectfully disagree, because I've been there. But let's keep going. The, June 24th, school is out, youth sports is pretty much done, right? So now you're taking account on a Saturday that really isn't realistic. And let alone, I know someone mentioned, what about a Sunday? Because it's a very big shopping area. So this weekend, it's a, it's kind of like out of character what, what's happening here. You're not taking into account what's going on there. We also didn't talk about a school bus. Because it, because in your, in your traffic, you have to factor in that a school bus is now going to have to come in on Summer Hill. Where, where, where is that going to go? How is that going to impact the traffic?
A school bus, in the ITE data, they've got volume counts of these driveways. So presumably, some of those vehicles are school buses. It would be one, maybe two school buses. It's not going to have as substantial as impact as the number of vehicles that go through there. The school buses are certainly accounted for in the ITE data. Now, the Saturday, back to the Saturday you mentioned.
Yeah.
The summertime is less critical, obviously, because schools aren't in session on Saturday as it is anyway. But keep in mind, I did do updated traffic counts in January on weekdays and the Saturday as well. And found volumes to be almost identical, in fact, a little bit lower.
What were the dates in January?
January counts for Tuesday the fifteenth and Saturday the nineteenth.
It's a holiday medium, but. I, I'm, I live there, and I am almost at the point where I don't even want to go there now, down that way. And then I think this is just going to make it tougher. I, I also think it's unsafe. I definitely agree with the whole left turn thing. I don't even know how that is even conceivable without potentially causing accidents. And the people that live on the other side, and we, remember Trump, we talked about, you remember, you made changes to the plans today. And this traffic study is from September, updated back in May and June. And this traffic study is from September, updated back in May and June of '17. It's hard to put it all together.
And that was going to be how, the last point that I had to make in testimony was that my traffic study is still valid despite the site changes, because what I'm looking at is number of residential units, size of the CVS and the size of the bank. And that hasn't changed, so the traffic generation to the drive, and the driveway locations haven't changed. None of that's changed from when I did the traffic study, so that remains valid. The only thing that did change, which I think is an improvement, is the ability to get from the residential in the northeast corner to the driveway on Summerhill, the northly driveway on Summerhill, without cutting through the Chase Bank.
I think we'll agree to disagree at this point. Because I don't, I don't even know the flow that's inside. Still, even though maybe you feel you've improved it, but I think from an entitlement perspective, it's still not sufficient. The flow, I think the flow inside actually is going to make the traffic outside even worse, because it's so tight.
I'm not sure I'm too able to. I just, you want site circulation, and then there's the traffic. I testified to you off-site, the traffic impacts to the signal and the operation of the driveways off-site. And that volume and that activity is generated by the uses on the site.
I just, I don't want to go on, I just, I just don't agree.
I think you made your point.
I just don't agree. I'll let you.
Thank you. I was going to discuss the circulation a little bit, but I think we should wait until your professionals have reviewed it, as Mr. Scaphon has discussed since he's here. I don't think that makes much sense in terms of the traffic.
So you basically did one weekday, right, in the morning and the afternoon. I leave the office later than that. Mr. Mayor usually doesn't allow me to leave until later. And I'm coming down New Brunswick, and it's 7:00, and I'm already back all the way up Old Stage Road, closer to New Brunswick. So I think, you know, the 6:15 time is short. Also, Rutgers is also not in session in any of these times, and we know there's a lot of commuters, because we see the volumes up on Ryder's Lane and going to the Cook Douglas Campus and thereabout. So I think we missed a lot of traffic that occurs there, and we didn't go late enough into the evening, from my experience and the two gentlemen that live in that area. I think we ran about an hour or so short on those traffic counts. That's all, sir.
Any other board questions? Jim, I mean, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think, I think the only way we're going to be able to hurdle this issue is to perform some additional counts.
And I'm sorry, just for the audience who may not know, Jim Watson is with CME, who's our consulting engineer, and he is a traffic expert. And he's been reviewing traffic in East project for a very long time. He's very good at his job.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I can tell you that the analysis that I reviewed and the, you know, personal experience that the board is conveying, the queues and the analysis and the queues that the board is describing are not matching up. And so I think the only way that we're going to be able to hurdle this is to do some additional counts at a time that we all agree to, when school's in session, when everything is happening. You know, Mr. Paragoy also prepared the synchro mod, I mean, he modeled this intersection, and I can tell you that the eastbound queue along Old Stage Road is shown in the model, but the southbound queue that everybody's talking about, and please, Mr. Paragoy, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think that that's showing up in his analysis. So we've got to figure out how we can, we can hurdle this. I mean, I think there are definitely some benefits where the existing site driveway is moved away from the intersection. I think the opening up that right turn slot a little bit further is also an additional benefit. The two driveways on Summerhill Road, I think the board really needs to weigh the pros and cons of the two driveways, and there's definitely pros and cons. If you take away the left and the northern driveway, then everybody's going to the center driveway. They're trying to make a left out in an area where the queue may extend back to more frequently. And also, I do think out of our latest technical review meeting, that connection to the top for the residential to come out there, I think that's better for the residential, that they don't have to go through the center of the site and the CVS and the Chase Bank. The center turn lane on Summerhill Road is something that the applicant worked out with the county before we got involved. And so, you know, that doesn't mean that it can't be revisited.
Let me just jump in.
Yeah, sure.
Because I got to tell you, you know, I used to live on the other side of town. And I hate that center turn lane on Ryder's Lane. I mean, I, you know, I used to, I almost killed myself several times. And I'm a mediocre driver, but I don't know. So I, I know the county kind of loves them, but I'm not crazy about them.
I mean, the other option is you can have your dedicated left turn slot for the traffic signal, southbound left. You can have a dedicated slot for northbound left to enter the site driveway. I mean, you can create dedicated slots to access the site. What you're losing there is the ability for the residents on the eastern side of the roadway to have better access into their property. So I think the thought behind the county is that that would help the residents.
But my concern is that, I'm not, I'm not a professional, trust me. You know, that we're kind of, to the sake of increasing traffic flow a little bit, we're sacrificing safety a little bit, and that's my concern with these kinds of lanes in here.
Well, I mean, one of the comments I heard was that as you're coming south down Summerhill Road, that lane opens up and someone could jump right into that, that left turn lane. I mean, that's a very risky maneuver, because there are multiple places where northbound traveling vehicles are getting into that left turn lane to access, to access the site. So I don't doubt that it, that it may happen at times, but it's a risky maneuver. And with the amount of congestion on this car, I don't, I don't know if it's going to be wide open for someone to jump right in.
I mean, I think anybody who's real life, lives and travels in East project, knows that the people who travel our roadways are not adverse to risky maneuvers.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, one thing I'd like to ask, Mr. Paragoy, in your testimony about when you discussed the levels of service and when you discussed the queues, you really talked about just how much was added to those queues and to those delays. On that, you know, based on your analysis, how far did you see the queue extending back on Summerhill Road from, from the intersection?
We actually did queuing counts while we were doing the traffic counts to see the queue, and the, it was, the average queue was about 32 vehicles at that peak. Few minutes when it really, really backs up, 32 vehicles in the p.m. peak, southbound on Summerhill.
And where does, where does that take you to? I mean, the distance of that, how far back?
It's off the, it's off the, off the page. We also noted how often it cleared, the signal was able to clear the queue, and it was cleared 85% of the signal cycles. It was removed from that driveway location on all of the signal cycles. So it shortened closer to the driveway and then reextended.
And that, and that is what I saw when I reviewed the model. The queue would build, the signal would release the green, and the queue would get through the light. That's what the model showed. I'm not here to argue everybody's personal experiences, because I know those are very real to everyone. And, you know, I go through this area myself quite a bit, so it's just a matter of how do we, you know, how do we reconcile these differences? And also, Mr. Chairman, to your point, you were correct that the way that the delay analysis was done, you know, we have existing levels of service for a partially occupied building, and then the no-build added in quite a bit of traffic for, for an office building. So I just wanted to confirm the testimony that was provided in the addition, the additional delays that you indicated. Was that existing to propose, or was that no-build to build?
That was no-build to build. And just for clarity, the office buildings that account for it, we added 25 trips in the morning peak hour, two trips in the evening peak hour, and 20 trips in the Saturday peak hour. So it's close to ITE in the evening, the most critical. What it's doing now, half.
So what would be the, what would be the increase in delays from existing to, to propose? I think you indicated like no more than three and a half seconds.
From existing to propose, levels of service, I'm just going through this quickly, I mean, I don't see any changes in the morning and the evening, level of service-wise. That, that southbound thru movement that on Summerhill goes from existing 51.4 seconds to build 56.5 seconds, a five-second increase in delay.
And then I think the other thing that I need to do with regard to the traffic counts, and if you could provide the January, the January counts that you just took, I think that would be helpful to be able to review those counts. But we can also take a look at if the peak hour was actually captured by, you know, the volumes are recorded every 15 minutes. And if the traffic's still building, well, you haven't captured the peak. You have to keep, you have to keep counting. So we can review the data and see if the, if the peak hour was actually captured as, as we were discussing here. And we can talk about additional confirming counts.
So, Mr. Watson, just to clarify, you would like to see some additional counts taken?
I think we should take additional counts.
All right. And secondly, you, I think I heard you correctly. You did not receive a, I guess, a synchro model for the southbound?
No, no, I do have it. What I'm saying is, the queue that we're talking about, I didn't see it developing the way, as bad as, as we're all discussing it occurs at in the, on the site. So I have, I have the model.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
We may have to, we may have to revise it and get new counts, but I do have, the models are all provided.
Sure. Mr. Phillips and then Mr. Havill.
That light at the corner of Summerhill and Old Stage is what we call a smart light, is that correct?
Yes, actually.
It recognizes motion and will change accordingly.
It does. It also has an emergency preemption where an emergency vehicle can cut off all the other.
Right, okay. Well, I asked that because I think you said that the longest queue you saw was 33 cars?
Thirty, 32 cars.
Thirty-two cars, okay. And using 25 feet per car or whatever, it's like 600 or 700 feet?
Sure.
Okay. You don't know where that 700-foot line is on Summerhill Road, do you?
It's, it's about 500 feet from the stop, 550 feet from the stop water, the property line. So 150 to 200 feet beyond.
150 feet beyond that. You wouldn't know how far our Mason Avenue is then on that list, would you?
I have a Google map, maybe I can sort it out, but I don't know for sure.
If you can be doing these counts, I think it would be helpful, because if we're talking about the peak evening, and we're talking about a smart light, so it tries its best, the way it's programmed, to clear as much as it can in various directions. And we know that both Summerhill Road and Old Stage Road both back up at that traffic light, either coming southbound or coming eastbound.
In the p.m., yes.
If I have those directions correct. So it's, it's clear that there's going to be some point at which it doesn't clear. And you said that there's 32 cars that go through, but you don't know what the timing on that light is. How long is that light green for, do you know?
Yeah, I have the signal timing. It's 126 seconds in an average cycle if it maxes out.
So it's two minutes?
Yeah, it's, and it's maxing out its green time essentially in the peak hours every cycle.
Okay, so do we know how many cars can get through in 126 seconds or two minutes?
Well, that's what, that's what the capacity analysis tells me. That's what these delays and levels of service are.
Okay, and that's 32?
Well, it doesn't give you that number, it gives me the delay. It's a function of the residual queue length that's there, the start-up timing on the light turn screen, everybody doesn't go up once, there's a start-up, it's all built into the calculation.
I was just trying to understand approximately how many cars go through during one of those two-minute openings.
Well, like I said, we saw 32. We watched to see if they cleared their queue, and 85% of those cycle lengths during the peak hours, it cleared. 15% of the time, it didn't get everybody through.
Summerhill Road, Old Stage?
Summerhill, Old Stage, it doesn't clear very often at all.
It doesn't clear very often at all, right?
Eastbound Old Stage, it's not.
Okay, so we have one light wave that has pretty much a failure rate during this period of time?
In terms of queuing, it doesn't clear the queue every time. Again, we are not adding any traffic to that by way of snipping that left turn out.
I think if you could, I think we have a request to have you do some additional traffic studies or release something. But you're not going to be able to give us the opportunity to tell how many actual cars go through the light then?
I know how many cars, but we did, we did traffic counts, I have the existing volumes. I can tell you, it's those peak hour volumes on Figure Two, or how many vehicles are going through.
Where is that in your report?
It's Figure Two.
Figure Two?
Yeah. So that, that southbound thru that's been on Summerhill Road, it's 480 vehicles per hour in the p.m. peak hour go through. 143 make a left, 200 make a right. So southbound Summerhill Road is over 800 vehicles per hour. We're adding 40.
That's 13 cars a minute. Does that sound right?
Sure, yeah. That's 60. We're adding one car every minute and a half.
Right, but actually, that was assuming it doesn't turn in the other direction. I should have already planned it by 30, because in truth, you're not having, I'm moving it that way, but that's not the total that will go through, right?
Well, there's 30 cycles per hour of the signal. So about 30 times an hour, it gets a green.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Just a brief, brief comment on this. Joe mentioned earlier that traffic counts were done while Rutgers wasn't in session back in May, I think it was of '17. And Rutgers probably wasn't in session the week of January 15th either, because a lot of us have had children go through schools, and they're all there. So all I would ask is that if you're willing to do additional, additional study, that you confirm with the township professional first to make sure that whenever you would like to do it, they feel is an appropriate time for it to be done. All right, with you? And not that this has to do with the exits, making left onto Summerhill, which I also have great concerns about, but when you're out there, and you have a hunch you will be with your people, maybe you should take a ride to Frost on Summerhill Road and see how long it takes to make a left. And that's fairly far up on, on Summerhill, okay? I think that might give you just a little bit different perspective on this, because this is not just, oh, this is going to be okay, okay? I really can see a lot of accidents happening here. And I think that you can do a thorough job before we come back with this. Okay, I think this is, we've had a couple sessions here, and I kind of felt that everything has been rushed. You know, we were given certain information last meeting completely different than what we were given in our packet, okay? So we received it that night. Tonight, there are things that just changed. Again, I know that everything has got to move along quickly, but it would be nice to have things in place ahead of time, give us the opportunity to review with the township as well, so that we can come to a conclusion with this as soon as possible, okay?
Understood. And what changed was the on-site. Everything, the access points in the off-site was very, very thoroughly vetted with the county. We met with them on a number of occasions. We went through all this, looking at the queues, looking at the simulation models, trying to figure out the best approach. And Jimmy, right, the two-way seven-left turn lane came to not make it through. So residents could have, would have a difficult time. But this, the off-site access was not done quickly. This has been almost three years now, we've been back and forth with the county. We've been back and forth with the county to get this where they want to see it.
Short, short of having another traffic light, which I'm sure no one would want. That's, right? Uh, you know, that or, or allowing, um, a left on Old Stage, but having it be in Frost Woods right, right there, which is further back, might be something that could be looked at. I'm not saying I don't live down there, but at least it would be further away from the light and might be a way of, of allowing the traffic flow to be a lot better and, and reduce accidents.
Well, we've, we're moving the existing driveway farther from the light and our north of the driveway is proposed as far as we possibly can from the light without, we have a buffer of Frost Woods. We can't move it any farther than it is.
No, I was talking about, I was talking about, of Old Stage Road. Because I, this crossing over Summer Hill and, you know, I'm not one for beating a dead horse, so to speak, okay? But there are, and as mentioned, there are a lot of older folks that go to a C V S. I don't care what any report says, it's, it's going to be dangerous. But if, if we were able to have, or you were able to, um, have the exit be further away on Old Stage Road from the light, maybe that's a better alternative. And I'm not saying I think it's good because I don't, okay? But I think it's might be better than having people cross over the three lanes of traffic to try to come north on Summer Hill.
We did look at that possibility with the county, but the, the queue on Old Stage extends beyond the limits of the property to the point where, and again, we have the buffer that we can't exceed. So you couldn't move it that much farther over and it's, you're not, you're just moving the problem farther away from the intersection. It's still going to be the same sort of condition. Summer Hill has that opportunity where the queue clears and you can make the turns. And in the simulation model, you can see that happening, but it doesn't happen as often on Old Stage. And we went through that iteration with the county and they were, they were very adamant on, we're still making the left turn out there. Again, no fear, somebody makes the left out and they're going to sit in that left turn lane trying to get into the through traffic queue and block the left turn lanes. And then you're doubling the volume of the extended queue because now the left turn traffic can't bypass the queue.
Okay, thank you. And I would, I would concur with that. If you look at the length of that left turn lane, it, it's, it's really driven by the ability for someone stuck in the queue to, to access it. That queue in that left turn lane doesn't extend all the way back. The county striped it that far back so that they can open it up as soon as possible to allow people to get in it that are stuck in the eastbound queue. So the, the eastbound queue blocks that driveway right now and I think it's, it's appropriate to restrict that left turn out. And I don't, I don't think you can get the driveway, even if you pushed it all the way to the limits of the property line. I think you're still battling that, that queue. So by restricting the lefts onto Old Stage Road, they would have to go out to the Summer Hill Road driveway and make a right and then make a left at the light. That, that's how they would have to go.
If I were, if, if I lived closer to there, I don't live far away, but I have a number of pharmacies closer. But would I come down Summer Hill Road to go to a pharmacy when I know that I have to go fight to make a left to go back up that hill? You know, it's, it's, it's a very difficult situation. And I'm just, you know, trying to come up with something that might be a little, a little more workable. I also have been backed up on Old Stage Road as probably everybody in the room has as well. And it doesn't seem to be an easy way to make this work well.
No. I, I think you would be making a right in and making a right out. You, it would, it would lend itself to people that are truly pass-by trips. I mean.
Might go somewhere else.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, when you look at the amount of volume on these approaches compared to the amount of volume that they're introducing, I mean, there, there's a lot of volume out there right, right now, you know?
Right. And that's what I mean, the pass-by traffic is a good point. That's what I mentioned. The bank and the pharmacy aren't necessarily destination uses, especially during rush hour. They're convenience uses. So if I'm already going southbound on Summer Hill, heading into Spotswood, now I can stop at the pharmacy. We're not putting a destination use. This is a, from other places. There's other C V Ss, there's other banks in town. It's a convenience move, especially when you have congested conditions.
Okay. I know that we always talk about peak hours whenever we have, you know, traffic studied down, but that one's busy all day. So it's not, and this is not like, you know, when there's a tremendous drop and there's no way should the rest of the day, you know, that wouldn't be true.
It's busy, but the, the queuing issue is, is more confined to the peak hours. For example, today on the way here, I just, just to drive through, it was about seven o'clock. There was zero queue on Summer Hill. I drove through the site and made the left out, no delay at all, no problem. So it's, it, it, it ends at some point. But yes, during those congested peak times, I think it's going to be more pass-by traffic to the bank and to the pharmacy and residential's coming in at that time rather than going out as an office would be. So I think that fits in nicely with the traffic pattern that you have there.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Happel, I love your optimism to say, there's a lot of old folks driving. You and I are a lot closer to being those old folks. Tell me where we started on the board, twenty years ago?
Mr. Sax, can we get a?
Just a quick question. Uh, Mr. Paragoy, when did you get the Middlesex County Planning Board approval for that configuration?
Oh, I don't have the, uh.
It's in the, uh, it's actually, Mr. Sax, the letter is attached to the staff report and it is dated November fifth, two thousand eighteen.
November fifth, two thousand eighteen, okay. And was that based upon a review of the zoning board application or was it, was on this application?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to confirm. Okay.
I just had a couple of questions from Mr. Paragoy. Let me answer this. The board is asking, uh, I guess, that the applicant forms some additional traffic counts at appropriate times. We did it obviously back in seventeen, just did it a few weeks ago. Do you see any value realistically to doing any additional traffic counts that's going to change the outcome of your analysis and your professional opinion?
I, I would doubt it only because we've got such remarkably similar numbers, the two different, you know, a year and a half apart. Just really got almost the same numbers, a little bit lower, but.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think one of the concerns here is that I respect where you and the other members of the board coming from. But the applicant has taken the traffic impact very seriously, as Mr. Paragoy indicated. We, we began discussions with the county over three years ago. And a lot of the issues that the board is raising were vetted and discussed with the county. And the reason we went to the county is because they have jurisdiction on Summer Hill Road. I understand your point about the, the two-lane roadway and the one on Ryder's Lane. I drive that a lot, so I understand your point. But the applicant worked with the county's professionals and this is the design that the county, uh, proposed and worked with the applicant. So, uh, I think that can't be overlooked. And I think if you look at the November fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, uh, conditional approval, it lays through all those conditions. Um, so from what my expert is telling me, he's, and telling you and telling the public is that these issues have been vetted and the, the, the agency that had jurisdiction over this has looked at all, all the impact issues that you're discussing. Not necessarily onsite circulation, those are different matters that Mr. Paragoy has discussed. Uh, it's not that the applicant is looking not to cooperate with the board, but I'm relying on my professionals and Mr. Paragoy is saying he doesn't really see the need or the value of additional counts, given the fact that they were just done several weeks ago, so.
During a holiday weekend when Rutgers wasn't in session.
Well, yeah, listen, I, I can't speak to that. I'm not the professional. I have to rely on my expert, obviously. Uh, but I just want the board to understand that this process with the county was not done, you know, over a two-week period. It was over years. Um, so Mr. Paragoy, if you want to respond to the issue of whether, you know, because this was taken over a holiday week, I mean, I don't know.
Excuse me, but before you do that, I have a question. The point you raised about the county lottery, can you answer me this question? The fact that the, the Middlesex County Planning Board approved their traffic plan, does that preclude this board from seeking supplemental information or, uh, additional traffic studies if, if this board feels that is necessary? No, no, not at all, Mr. Schmidt. I mean, in fact, um, just as Mr. Hemlman has to rely upon his professionals, I have to rely and this board has to rely upon our professionals. And I just heard a little while ago from Mr. Watson that he's a little concerned that, uh, he, you know, he, he wants to see additional traffic counts done just to confirm some of the, uh, the findings that were contained in the report. Uh, particularly dealing with queuing, uh, going southbound on, on Summer Hill Road. Um, uh, you know, I'll just make the comment, I mean, it won't be the first time that Middlesex County, uh, and with no offense to Ms. Tujia, uh, uh, who, who happens to work for the county. Uh, but, um, it, it wouldn't be the first time that they, they've, uh, uh, dropped the ball on projects, you know? I, I've seen it happen all over the county where, uh, there are times when, uh, they, they should be more, uh, more involved and more concerned about what's happening at, you know, on county roads and at county intersections and they just haven't. Uh, I will also note that, uh, when you got your approval in November of, uh, twenty eighteen, uh, I, I think at that particular point in time, I think that you have a whole new staff now, uh, in the engineering department. So I don't even know what, what kind of scrutiny was given to that application. The reason I asked Mr. Hemlman as to which application, uh, was, was scrutinized was the Planning Board or the zoning board? I just wasn't sure, but, uh, no, Mr. Schmidt, you know, certainly this board has, uh, has the oversight uh, to determine whether or not a particular project that's before this board and to be considered for this town satisfies all the health, safety and welfare requirements set forth in the municipal land use law. And if my traffic engineer is requesting that some additional counts be done, uh, then I'm going to rely upon that. So my question for you now, Mr. Hemlman, is, is, is your comment a, uh, I guess, a decision not to engage in additional traffic counts?
No, I, I guess, Mr. Sax, I guess what I'm trying to, what the, what the applicant is trying to wrestle with is what is the intention? What will the additional traffic counts demonstrate and what will they establish that already hasn't been established through these traffic counts that have been taken, you know, a year and a half before? I, I maybe we can have Mr. Watson weigh in on that.
Well, Mr. Watson can weigh in again if he'd like and sure, sure.
Yeah, so, so my thought is that the county made these decisions and worked with the applicant based on the volumes that they had from when the counts were originally taken. And if there's, uh, new counts taken that reflect more congestion through the corridor, that may change their thoughts on the design that they were, that they approved. I mean, I, I looked at, I'm looking at the approval and under traffic control number twelve in this approval, I, I just, I'm questioning whether this condition has been satisfied where the county asked for, um, submission of, um, plans designed, the center turn lane design in accordance with the T C D must be submitted with the revised plans. They were asking for intersection site distances for both driveways on Summer Hill Road in accordance with ASJO and they're also asking for a new traffic simulation model in accordance with the submitted traffic report must be submitted with the revised plan. So that, those are conditions and I question if that was all satisfied with the county.
We, we, we will be preparing a signing and striking plan for the, the center turn lane. That's what they're talking about there. The traffic study results were for the zoning board application, but it was the same number of units and then the same thing. They just weren't the updated, wanted to apply the updated report with more buildings, but it's the same number of units, same church generation and everything. So what they reviewed is this exact traffic generation, these exact traffic volumes. But it was the zoning board application which had taller residential buildings and less of them.
And the intersection site distances, were, were those provided or can they be provided?
Yes, they just wanted to have shown them the, the record plan, the approved plan. If I may just, sorry.
I mean, I, I think there's merit to it. I don't, I don't want to just collect more data for the sake of collecting data. I know this is costly and it, it's not a small effort, but, um, I wouldn't recommend it if I didn't think there was some merit to it to help us, you know, get through this process.
Well, let's see, what I, what I'm looking at here is the, the impact, the delta, the change. This is the impact of this project. So if the traffic volumes are ten percent higher or ten percent lower, the, the delta, the change, what this project does, I think would be quite similar. Also, I accounted a little bit for, I think, in the analysis by looking at all that worst case scenario for that possibility that some days you may have higher traffic lines. I mean, I recognize that it fluctuates from day to day, certainly. So that's why we look at that conservative analysis. We assume that all these three uses are peaking at the same time as the road. We, we take the lower pass-by numbers. We don't account for the internal interaction to, to, to have that layer of protection. For, for an instance where you might have missed some of the volume. Now, in this case, I don't think we did because we had two days that are remarkably similar, but we take that conservative approach for that reason. That's one of the reasons we look at the worst case scenario. And that's what we've done here.
So you'd be happy to do the additional counts then? That's my takeaway?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
So you'd be happy to do the additional count? That's my takeaway?
I think so, but I wanted to understand from Mr. Watson, I mean, are you, I mean, are you looking to try and confirm the counts that were recently taken and also as it relates to the capacity analysis and the queuing and all that? Is that what you're?
Yes.
And configuration? Is that what you're getting at?
Yes. And, and I think if we have two counts that were taken, you know, on, one on winter break, one on summer break, I think we can, we can answer the question, uh, on how much additional traffic is out there. It'll only make the delta even higher, right? I mean, I, I, I'm sorry, it would decrease your, your delta. It would decrease your delta if we find out the traffic out there is even worse than we thought. I mean.
Oh, yes, that's a good point. It would decrease the, the delta in terms of traffic volumes, you know? Well, let's maybe, maybe we can make a deal. Can we all agree that the P M peak hour is the time period that we want to take a look at?
No, no.
No, no, no.
And that's the most critical.
We're not making deals.
I mean, look.
Come on, I'm broke.
Mr. Hemlman, the applicant's decision, I can, I can tell you honestly, I feel comfortable speaking for the board. If one of our experts, especially Mr. Watson, who I have great respect for, we all do, if he's not comfortable, I'm not going to be comfortable.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not, I'm not arguing.
You can talk, you can spin around, you can do a pirouette. I'm not going to be comfortable with this, with these numbers if my expert says we need additional stuff.
No, I was just trying to.
So the decision is yours beyond that, but I'm just letting you know.
I, I understand, Mr. Chairman. I was just trying to understand the intention of what Mr. Watson's getting from collecting the word.
And I think Mr. Watson's.
So why don't we, could we agree on a, on a timeframe and a?
That's what I was getting at. You may have had an unartful term there, okay?
Yes, he was thinking Monty Hall.
So let's, so let's, obviously, let's, we, you'll do the normal A M peak, which Mr. Watson was at seven thirty?
Well, we're going to make sure we capture that our people.
And you're going to consult with Mr. Watson on that. And also on the P M peak, and I think, uh, you know, Mr. Criscolo has mentioned this, that the P M peak in that area probably extends almost till seven. So you did it from four thirty to six thirty, pardon me?
Later.
Maybe.
Guys, great.
No, no comments from, from the public, all right? It, it's not on the record. All right. So again, I want you to confirm with Mr. Watson what he would be comfortable with. But you've heard from members of the board, members from the public apparently who want to chime in, that it may occur earlier than, than four thirty, uh, but certainly it's got to go to seven, seven thirty. You know, Saturday, you can do what you want on Saturday. Now, on the, on the, uh, on the weekday, uh, uh, traffic counts that you're going to do, I also want you to confirm that it's going to be a time period when the East Rutherford Schools are in session, the Spotswood Schools are in session and Rutgers University is in session.
And when there's full, full days as well.
Right, full days, not half days. Now, that shouldn't be a problem this time of year because I don't, you know, it's not, not vacation time yet.
We have President's Day.
Right, but I'm just saying in general, I'm sure we can get a day here that's going to be acceptable, so.
We'll work together to.
All right, accomplish it. Mr. Hemlman, is that acceptable?
That is, and I would suggest that that be done probably in the next several days.
Absolutely.
If we can accomplish that, because to your point, all those schools will be in session.
All right, fine. Let's hope we don't get a blizzard.
Fair point.
Any other, uh, board questions, please?
I just had one of them.
Sure.
This is for us now. At what point is it just too much? Because if we go to three o'clock, because that's when, three thirty, when school's out, Frosch, Almigro, those areas, and we extend to like seven thirty. Grove, those areas, and we extend to like 7:30, 8 o'clock-
We don't need to go to 8:00.
No, you'll see where the traffic starts to build, and we can use the counts that we've already collected to see where it starts to build. We can capture this peak, no problem.
This data here shows that 4:30, it's at a high number, so clearly 3:30 makes sense to go back to, to see where it breaks. And then, it's actually very high at 6:15, why you stopped, I don't know, but we need to see the drop point, right? It doesn't have to go like this. But when did you-
Let me ask a question, if I can. Did you put out any ATRs out here, do you have any ATR data on where we can?
I, not that I don't know, not that we do.
Because it's another way of, if you put out a tube counter across the roadway, that collects continuous data on a 24-hour basis, so you can-
Why can't we include that?
You can, you can see that.
Maybe we should include that.
That would make sense.
Yeah.
You can do that. You get a fuller picture.
Because what this board is trying to do is actually help you figure something out, I don't know if that's our job. I think this is just, right now, too much to understand for those people who live here, how you can make, how you can say this is like a little situation. I think it's out of character, the amount of traffic that's coming through here, so we need real data to make a decision.
I think that's, my suggestion would be to let Mr. Watson and Mr. Paragoid work out-
Fair enough.
The appropriate AM and PM peak times, and let the professionals agree on that. Mr. Chairman, if you're okay with that.
Yeah, I think it's fine, maybe we want to look at a 24-hour count.
We can, we can-
To not see the edge of flow, and when exactly that happens. Did you want to speak about interior flow at all? I remember when we-
I think we were suggesting that maybe we leave that for after the professionals-
Okay, then, what I would, okay, great, I just didn't want to cut your plane to my seven. What I would like to do then, if there's no more board questions for this witness, is I'd like to hear from the public, the hours getting a little late.
And Mr. Himmelman, just so I'm aware, the only remaining witnesses you would have would be your architect and your planner?
And environmental.
And environmental, okay, then obviously a recall.
To be clear. I would just ask that if you spoke at the last meeting, that you let folks who haven't had a chance to speak, speak first.
We're not allowed to talk about property, are we?
No, no, sir, sir.
First of all, sir, you can't take comments from the public until you're up to my guys' just suggesting that in fairness to everyone, I would like to have people who haven't had an opportunity to speak, to speak first. Please raise your right hand and swear, you swear to tell the truth, tell the truth to God.
Yes, I do.
State your name, spell your last name, and tell us where you live.
Bill Gump, G-U-M-P-P-E-R. I've been a resident of East Brunswick for 48 years. Do I have to limit my statements to traffic, or can I-
You do not. No, you don't.
No, you don't, but I'm going to limit you to five minutes, sir.
Okay.
But no, you don't have to limit it.
I don't know what was discussed, I've only been to one other meeting.
Hold on a second.
My understanding is that you would have allowed the public to ask questions-
Yes, yes.
As opposed to giving a statement.
Yes.
Chairman, I think that's been your distorted practice anyway.
Well, look, I'm not going to stop someone from making a statement if that's what they choose to do.
Well, I think the concern is that if Mr. Sacks was trying to give direction to the public, that we'd like to ask specific questions of testimony of the witness. If it turns out it's a statement, I'm not sure we're getting to the point that Mr. Sacks was trying to get to, that's my concern.
Yeah, I'd like you to, yeah, I mean, I understand, you know, you're going to say what you want to say, sir, I'm not going to, I'm not going to cut you off, but in fairness to the crowd that we have here, if you have, I'd like you to focus on the testimony that was elicited this evening, just like we did at the-
That's why I asked if I had limited to traffic, because that's why I asked if I hadn't limited to traffic, because I have nothing to say about traffic.
No, you don't, you're not limited to traffic. I'm the chairman of this board, sir. You can ask the question, you can make a statement, you can't go over five minutes.
Okay. Like I said, I don't know when it needed to start, I was only at the last one, so I don't know if the impact of schools was taken into consideration. I tried to find out what the taxes are going to be on these units, and I wasn't able to ascertain that, so I went to Winmore Apartments, and they told me that they pay 1,700 a unit, taxes on each apartment. Now, I also went to the Board of Education and found out that it costs us 19,000 a year to educate a child. So if you have two children in each one, we're losing 30-some thousand dollars a year per unit, and I just wondered if that was ever impressed, because like I said, I wasn't at the other meetings.
Yeah, Mr. Gump, I can respond to that. Unfortunately, this board cannot take into consideration what impact any type of residential development would have on the school enrollment.
Even though it's affecting the taxpayers.
Absolutely.
Because they have to foot the bill.
There's a volume of case law that goes back to the 1960s on that issue.
My only other comment was if you remove the commercial, two commercial buildings, that would drastically open up the site and might alleviate a lot of the problems we're discussing. The only people that benefit from those are the owner, not the town.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand and swear, you swear to tell the truth, tell the truth to God.
I swear.
State your name, spell your last name, and tell us where you live.
Mark Abraham, E-R-A-H-I-M, I live in 22 lengths down East Brunswick. Last time I asked two questions about the current accident rate, Boasong ratio for that intersection and anticipated one, and I didn't hear you give a number about this one. Do you have the Boasong ratio for accident in that intersection in your calculation? All right, so let me extend the five minutes.
You get a bonus, cut the second.
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead. The accident rate is expressed as the number of accidents per million entering vehicles at the intersection.
That's correct.
I don't have that available data, I don't have the million entering vehicles per gallon house.
Boasong ratio is one of the reliable formulae to calculate the accident ratio for safety, and it depended on current data and amount of traffic going through the intersection, and also with the new traffic, with the new amount of traffic you're adding in, you can anticipate how many accidents per minute can happen in that intersection, and you didn't provide that to us, that's very important for us.
Nothing that we're doing should increase the accident rate, the rate of accidents per million entering vehicles, if anything?
I think that's in your point of view, not from our point of view or public point of view.
As I was saying, if anything, I would say that we would probably decrease that rate by strictly-
All right, let's go for the second question.
Please, sir, don't interrupt.
Yes, sir. Okay, because there is no answer here.
Excuse me, now you can listen to his answer, but you can't dispute what he says or interrupt while he says.
I'm just trying to limit the time, he gives to me five minutes. Thank you.
If anything, I would say we're improving safety out here by eliminating the left turn onto Old Stage Road, and by providing the two-way side left turn lane, and by relocating our driveway farther from the intersection than it is today.
All right, we have the gentleman over there, he's a professional, he can tell us about Boasong ratio, please.
So I think what could be done is accident history, reports could be pulled from the police department, that we can, we can look at that. I mean, that's easy enough to be done.
And we can anticipate the new car, the anticipated rate of accident may happen when you increase the traffic on that intersection also, right?
Oh, I don't, I don't think I'm in a position to say whether it would increase or decrease, there are, restricting the left out would be a safety benefit, I mean, there are, there are pros and cons here, without a doubt, but we can pull the accident history and see if the existing driveway currently has an accident history, right?
Yes, with accident, actually, I'm a professional engineer, I work for another state, and I did a lot of traffic also before, and it's actually affected a lot, because the number of cars going through the intersection is increasing, and that's going to affect the actual rate for accident. What is the speed limit you got for Summer Hill Road in your calculation?
The speed limit of Summer Hill is 40 miles per hour.
Yes, okay, in the B hours, when there's children walking in the street, how much is the speed limit over there? You put in a calculation also, same 40 miles per hour? I don't think, like, we change in the speed limit in Summer Hill when kids are presenting to 25 mile per hour, and you can see it, maybe after Rusland, I don't know if it's still affected, so is Rusland, too. That's something for the county to take care of, to look at it, because there's a lot of kids who are going to come out from that building, going to school, and walk around. All right, there was another thing, when you put in a calculation for the current traffic, you assume the worst-case scenario for traffic, right?
Yes.
Okay, that include, that's mean, you include a full occupation for the current parking lot, which is included right now, whatever, 100, whatever car in there?
For full occupancy of the residential.
And a commercial.
And a commercial, it's busiest hour.
Okay, so you, in your calculation for the current traffic, you give us a calculation, so you're showing that minimum, minimum differential between the current and the Boasong one, that you assume the current commercial building is full with cars every day in the B hours, right?
I'm assuming that the commercial building is its busiest hour is at the same time as all the other industries on the city.
That's not the question, the question was, you put in your calculation that commercial space is fully occupied with cars, and those cars going into the traffic right now?
Yes, it's fully occupied, it's fully open, CVS.
Because every time I pass by that building, I maximum usually see about five, six cars in that full parking lot, so I think all your numbers are inaccurate, or there is a differential in that?
You're talking about the existing building.
Yes.
Yes, I looked at a future scenario, whereas if that building wasn't fully occupied.
Mr. Abraham, I'm going to give you 30 seconds.
All right, I'm done, I just got everybody's attention for the information, I feel like it's missed, or it's misinterpreted for everybody, thank you.
Please raise your right hand and swear, you swear to tell the truth, tell the truth to God. State your name and spell your last name.
Patrick Bowen, B-O-W-E-N, 27 Hillwood Road. First quick question, where's the dumpster?
Dumpsters.
Where are the dumpsters?
Where are the dumpsters?
Pretty far, I'm surprised.
All right, you're good.
Sure.
There are several locations for dumpsters, starting with the CVS, there is one located right behind the CVS building, we have another dumpster for the residential, located just to the south of that, we have another dumpster located up to the northeast, so there's three dumpster locations, there's not one for the chase bank.
So the furthest apartment complex has to walk three buildings to get to their dumpster?
No, they're, basically, the garbage is basically collected inside the buildings, there'll be further testimonies, but basically it's collected within the buildings and brought out by maintenance to the dumpsters, not by the individual test.
Okay, okay. Clubhouse, how many occupants are in the clubhouse? What can I-
I mean, that's something our architect will-
Yeah, we haven't had, that's where it gets the future testimony out of.
Okay, because that goes into the question of parking, tandem parking, which is a complete disaster. Now, can the board stop this?
Well, the board, the board has a responsibility to either approve an application or deny it, what happens to this application beyond that, you know.
Can you request-
That's the limits of our say in the application.
Can you request an elimination of a building? In order to provide more-
That's up to the application, that's up to the application.
We have to judge the application that's presented to us.
Correct, the application right now is the application that's being presented.
Because we have a common theme here, and the common theme is there's not enough space. So let me pose this question to you, would you guys live there? Knowing you have tandem parking, would you live there? Knowing that one day you'll pull out of your parking spot, your wife goes out of the garage, you're both gone, somebody pulls into your spot, now you can't get in the garage or in your spot, would you guys live there?
It's really not a question that we can or should answer.
Well, Mr. Bowen, I think you've heard comments from various members of the board concerned about-
Yes, it is a big concern.
Okay. Well, I'll just leave it as, you're trying to pack eight pounds of you-know-what, five-pound weight, it's not dumping.
Excellent. Ladies and gentlemen, we could do, I mean, I appreciate your enthusiasm, but we really shouldn't be applauding. Raise your right hand, sir, you swear to tell the truth, tell the truth to God.
Yes, yes, I do.
State your name, spell your last name.
My name is Alvin Booke, B-O-O-K-E, and for 50 years, I lived at 29 Bosco Drive, which is off the map. But I'd like to make several comments and raise several questions. First of all, I think to the traffic engineer, the date of May 2017 for a traffic study, a lot has taken place in East Brunswick in this particular area since then, and most of it has to do with Monroe. The Old Stage Road has become a shortcut to get through and to Monroe and to southbound Turnpike. The time of the day, yes, extends to 7:00, but it also starts around 3:00. And I can tell you as someone who comes out on Bosco, which is two streets over to the left, off the map, that, you know, if I want to go to shop, I don't go at 3:00, you know, I go earlier, it's just too hard to get out there, because you've got traffic coming both ways on Old Stage Road. All right, so far as Summer Hill, Summer Hill backs up, as many of you know, over the cross, so I would strongly suggest that a traffic study be done with a revision of 3:00, rather than starting at 4:30. Second, parking, I've heard no mention from the, it would be better if you could put the other slide up, but that may take too much time, but as far as parking, what size parking spots are these going to be? You know, you have a lot of SUVs, you have a lot of pickup trucks.
There's already a testimony that there-
And the other question also has to do with parking, which, is there any way you can put the other-
Well, continue with your-
Okay, well, there's one thing I don't see on the other, which clearly identifies many of the parking spots, and seems to me an awful lot for CVS. Where are the fire hydrants? We all know that a fire hydrant, you cannot park within 20 feet of a fire hydrant, so that means if you put it where the parking spots would be, that's the elimination of, again, you know, six or eight parking spots.
Well, I'm sure when you did your parking calculations-
Is there any fire hydrants living for that? Or has it yet to be taken care of?
There are fire hydrants on the site, and we were requested, I believe, by the fire official to add an additional hydrant per his letter, which we would agree to do and work with him to do so, so.
So I think the gentleman's question is, are there essentially parking spaces that are illegal to park in your account?
I'm not aware of any illegal parking spaces in our plan.
Well, let's put it this, this way, I would rephrase it and say, are there any fire hydrants in the parking spots?
There are no hydrants within the parking spots.
Okay, thank you.
Please raise your right hand and swear, you swear to tell the truth, tell the truth to God.
I do.
State your name, spell your last name, and tell us where you live.
Tim O'Neill, O'Neill's Capital O, possibly, Capital N-E-I-L-L, I live on Carter Road, 15 Carter Road. First, I want to make the point that it's strange to have a conversation about what the impact of all of these new cars are going to be in the area, when most of our conversation is about how the existing roads can't handle the existing traffic, and there's obviously going to be additional traffic. Now, I understand that the numbers are being put out there, but all of the analysis is on the Old Stage Road, Summer Hill intersection. The idea that that intersection won't be negatively impacted, let's say the PM rush hour, is based on the idea that everybody's going to come down Summer Hill Road south and turn into the residences. So maybe it won't have the big impact on the Old Stage Road, Summer Hill intersection, but I live right off Central, and I know I've tried to make that left off the cross many times, it's already virtually impossible to make those turns for the people who actually live in those neighborhoods now. So there's a lot of focus on the hypothetical people who might live in this development, but the focus for the board, I believe, has to be on those of us who live here now, who pay taxes now, who send our kids to these schools right now. pay taxes now, who send our kids to these schools right now, and we are going to be negatively impacted by this. As it stands, I live maybe an eighth of a mile from Summerhill Road. If I'm leaving my house and I would need to make a left on Summerhill Road during rush hour, I drive in the opposite direction so that I can go and make a right onto Old Stage Road, half a mile down, and then come and drive through this intersection. So things like that are not taken into consideration in any traffic study that's going to be done. But if you have, what, about sixty units and all those cars coming down Summerhill Road, you gotta look at how it's going to impact the rest of the road, not just this one intersection. Thanks.
Please raise your right hand and swear, you swear to tell the truth, tell the truth, self you got?
I do.
State your name, spire your last name and tell us where you live.
Maureen Levine, L E V I N A. I live on Bosco Drive. Similar sentiment to the gentleman on Bosco Drive who spoke prior to me. Um, a couple of questions. I understand that you've addressed the traffic issues for the most part on Summerhill Road. I don't see that you've really addressed the Old Stage Road traffic, so my questions are as follows. On Old Stage Road, coming out, you'll only be able to make a right-hand turn coming out of this development?
An old-stage turn. Yes.
Only a right turn for it. So, and trucks presumably coming in either direction, so coming down Old Stage Road towards Summerhill Road to do, to do deliveries to the CBS would technically have to wait until the traffic on the other side of the road clears, thereby making even further delays along Old Stage Road possibly and more than likely during some of the morning peak times and even the evening peak times in order to make deliveries. So that's the first thing. Again, having said that the size of the truck matters, you now have traffic coming the other way, which is actually keyed in both directions because of the size of the truck and the amount of space that it needs to make the turn into that development. So I'd like somebody to address how that delay is going to further, you know, affect traffic. I don't know if you've put that into consideration. The other thing is pedestrian traffic, presumably with a hundred and twenty units, the addition of some retail space here, the seven-eleven across the street, the ShopRite shopping center, there's going to be certainly an increase in pedestrian traffic. I'm not sure, we have a tremendous amount of pedestrian traffic, we talked about vehicular traffic. I'd like to know what impact additional pedestrian traffic is going to have on those delayed times at that intersection. The other question that I have is presumably there will, although we're, we've already decided that every single unit in the hundred and twenty apartments here will have children, I'm assuming that that won't be the case. Having said that, the Hammerfield Middle School is within walking distance of this development, which will, again, have pedestrian traffic during the morning rush hour and the afternoon rush hour, coming to and from school on foot. Nobody's discussed whether the, the remaining schools, presumably Frost, which I know all the elementary school children do get a bus for, and the high school, which they will get a bus for, where these bus stops will be? Will they be actually inside the development? Will they be on either Old Stage Road or Summerhill Road presumably at the high school level? These will be on Old Stage Road or Summerhill Road. Maybe not at the elementary school level, so I think that those are also things that need to be taken into consideration. Has anybody added times for pedestrian delays coming in and out of this development?
Okay, I'll, I'll take them one at a time.
Okay. Sorry.
The, the truck turning you mentioned and, and the truck getting into the site, keep in mind it comes once per week and it doesn't come in those peak times.
Okay.
So it's only one time a week, so it's not gonna have.
Okay, thank you.
Some additional impact. Um, the pedestrian traffic, as far as walking to, to here, there's an eight-foot wide multi-use path along Summerhill Road, along the site in front of, so pedestrians have a, a, a perfect walking path, nice wide walking path. And as far as at the traffic light, it's timed in such a way that really the timing is dictated by the vehicles, not the pedestrians. So if, if a pedestrian pushes the button, they have enough time to, to cross on the walk signal and it'll stay green longer if there's enough car traffic there.
Okay.
So the pedestrians don't really create as big of an impact as at some intersections I know where they push the button and there's a, a big change in the green time for the cars. This intersection is timed such that it's vehicular driven, not pedestrian driven.
Okay.
So they don't have much of an.
Maureen, I'm, I'm gonna have to cut you off as we're close to.
You will, I just wanted to ask one last question and that is on the entrances on Summerhill Road. Are those gated so the people, that vehicles coming down Summerhill Road would not be able to use this, these entrances as shortcuts to avoid the light on Summerhill Road to get through? Is there going to be a gate, uh, anything that's gonna prevent traffic from coming in and cutting through that development?
No, it's not.
Nothing? Do you anticipate that that's gonna happen?
No, the right turn light opens up right beyond the driveway, much faster, just turn right at the signal and right turn.
Okay, but we were still talking about thirty-two cars of delay, so to think that there wouldn't be cars during the day doing that. And the last thing's on the parking for Frost Woods, that having to cross that road for the designated parking that you left for Frost Woods, having to cross that driveway, is there any way to make that so that anybody who wanted to access Frost Woods with a child or a dog or something like that wouldn't necessarily have to cross the street?
No, and that, that, that's certainly not a busy driveway. I mean, you, you cross the driveway in front of the ShopRite all the time and that has many times more traffic than that driveway is gonna have.
Okay, I was just making that from recreational purposes and for the many people who use it for their kids and pets and dogs in the woods. Thank you, sorry.
Please raise your right hand and swear, do you swear to tell the truth, tell the truth, self you got?
Yes, I do.
State your name, spire your last name and tell us where you live.
Uh, Marlin Madison, M A R L L I N, M A T T I S, thirty-two Francis Road, East Brunswick.
Well.
Hello. Uh, yeah, so, you know, I've been to, um, you know, all these meetings and, um, I, I have to say, this is like, uh, it's, it's, it's an insult to our township's Spotswood and East Brunswick collective intelligence. It's just, it just makes no sense. Um, you know, if, if you look back, I know your backs have been turned to the audience, uh, you know, the developers, uh, when you can throw a pen behind you and you can hit a doctor, a lawyer, engineer, teacher, professionals of all, of all ilks, these are very, very smart people. And I know we've been talking in terms of, uh, you know, metrics and data and all that stuff, but, um, you know, I, I spoke to my son recently and, you know, we're talking about this whole thing. And, uh, you know, he kind of boiled it down, distilled it down to a very simple, um, syllogism to me. Uh, he said, you know, Dad, if, if you adopted ten new kids when we were growing up in our house with two bathrooms and you told me that my access to my bathroom would not change with ten new kids, it's, it's, it just, it's nonsensical. It makes no sense, right? So you have two hundred and forty-plus cars and, and traffic going in and out. I, I, I care nothing about your ingress and egress study because that's just stupid. It just makes no sense, right? It, it doesn't make any sense until the fact happens. Um, so you are, you're literally, you're, you're changing the fabric of our town. You are making things more difficult for people who have lived here forever. And we have no problems getting new people in, you know, but that particular intersection is not the right intersection for this development. It is just not. It needs to go somewhere else. Uh, and I know you already bought it, right? So you have to develop it. Uh, you know, I have no problem with you guys making money. Um, but, you know, that volume of new folks coming into that particular spot with Old Stage Road and Summerhill already being, you know, um, compressed with traffic, there's no study that you can provide me with. Uh, and again, you know, you're talking to bright people, they're not stupid. There's no study that you can provide our township with that will tell us that this will keep, you know, the, um, the, the stress of trying to get onto the road so you can get to work at six o'clock in the morning, the stress of not getting hit right on the car because there is additional concentration of traffic. You are creating a danger zone in our township. You are. And that's not right. Somebody is going to get hurt just by sheer mathematics, right? This is volume, more cars mean, uh, a greater possibility, probability of accidents. It's, it's just not the right thing. And, you know, I think the pushback you're getting from our township, um, you know, representatives is a function of how brilliant they are because townships are brilliant people too. And they're pushing that card because you're creating, you're creating a red flag for our town. And I, I don't know how we make this better because, again, you already bought the property. Um, but you, you can't put two hundred-plus cars in, in that spot and tell our township that, hey, everything's gonna be okay, you know, gonna be fine. Um, and again, I would ask you to look back at the audience when you guys make your comments because your backs are turned to us, you're only talking to folks who you think are the decision makers, but these are the decision makers. These are the folks who are gonna tell you yes or no because we're gonna pressure on these guys and this lovely lady, um, to, to, to make the right decision. That's not right.
I'm also gonna cut the line off, Mr. Chairman, at the last woman, or the last man who's.
Yeah.
The lady, the lady's, right, you're the last one.
Gotcha.
No, we're, we're cut now. You'll, you can speak next time, sir, alright? We're not gonna stay here till one in the morning. I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead.
Couple of comments. One, I work in the insurance business. We call that lane that you're, uh, doing right in the middle of Summerhill, the suicide lane. That has been a problem in many states that have that. There's accidents all the time, so I don't think it's safe at all. Two, again, traffic, if you did any of these studies that you did, anytime around a holiday, Thanksgiving, Christmas, certain times, they have to post a cop at the ShopRite because traffic is so bad and there are always accidents coming in and out of ShopRite. That's always backed up. And the next thing, the Old Stage entrance that you have everyone making a right turn out of, if those people truly want to make a left, where are they gonna end up going? They're going to go either to make the first right or their first left, make U-turns. Those people still need to get to the left, so they're just gonna be using the side streets where all residential homes are and kids are out in the streets and it's gonna be just more of a disaster. So that's really it. And, um, question though, if you do do another traffic study, can we have someone from the town join so we could verify all the data that's collected?
Mr. Watson is, is the township's traffic engineer?
He will be involved.
He will be involved.
Okay.
So, Mr. Watson.
But I need to be present while that's happening? Not just that he's involved in what day, what time?
Either him or somebody from his staff will be there.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Please raise your right hand and you swear, you swear to tell the truth, tell the truth, self you got?
Yes.
State your name, spire your last name and tell us where you live.
Stewart, County's S T E W R T, last name K O N C I U S. We're twenty-nine Francis Road.
I'm sorry, twenty-nine one Francis.
Twenty-nine Francis Road, the first street out of this.
Oh, no, I know what Francis is.
Uh, if there was a hundred percent occupancy, then how many parking spots were left? We, we exceed the parking requirement required by the state for.
Just answer the question, how many?
I think he is answering the question.
No, he's just, he's just quoting that he's at the.
You asked the question, you have, you have to accept the answer.
Okay. Is there a specific number of how many spots are available?
No, there's not.
Would we guess ten percent?
Depends on how many, how, can I finish?
I'm waiting for you to finish.
You were ready to answer another question. It, it depends, cause I can't, there's no guarantee that every resident's gonna utilize every one of those parking spaces or have a car for utilizing every one of those spaces. We are only designing to the ordinance and also using the guidance of RSIS to allow for enough parking spaces to support the development.
Would you estimate more or less than twenty open spots?
Honestly, I would estimate based on I T E data, census data at East Brunswick, about a hundred and fifty of those spaces to be occupied by residents. No remaining would be open for.
Perfect, thank you. I've had, so a hundred and fifty spots, alright, so let me get to the other part of the question. So would you agree that making a left out of this community might be a little bit more troublesome than it is at, you know, right now? Making a left-hand turn out of this community?
No, with, with our proposal, it'll be easier with the center of the turn.
Okay. I live in the first street outside of this community. People are constantly making right-hand turns into our street to do a U-turn. So they make a, they come down Old Stage Road, they turn up our street, at the top peak where I live, they turn around so they can from the street make a left-hand turn. If you can't, you're saying it's gonna be easier from the Old Stage connection, can you make a left? Are you allowed to make a left?
Not out of our side, one of the stages down.
Okay, so they're gonna make a right. They're gonna go up my street and turn around.
Or they would just turn right on Summerhill.
If they make a right out of Old Stage on the Old Stage, because they can't make a left. Can they make a left coming out of the Old Stage?
No.
So they're gonna make a right.
But the equivalent movement would be to make a right on the Summerhill and then make a left at the traffic light.
Am I saying it wrong?
But in fairness, I think what the, the engineer said is to get to the same place as a turnaround, you would come out and then out on Summerhill and they can make a right on Old Stage. Or like a left on Old Stage.
The problem is right now, people, people.
I understand exactly what you're saying. I'm just saying that's his answer, I didn't say I agree or disagree. Please raise your right hand and you swear, you swear to tell the truth, tell the truth, self you got? State your name, spire your last name and tell us where you live.
Uh, Darcona, D H O N A, three Robin Court. Darcona, D H A R, K H O N A, three Robin Court. Okay, um, the exit off of the Old Stage, um, Mr. Watson, my, my concern with that is that it looks like a concrete island that's there and if you have trucks coming in from that side, are they gonna be able to make that turn? Will there be an appropriate turn radius?
So that, that's true, they're currently proposing a concrete island right now that I understand is mountable, but the truck would be driving over that island and that's part of, that's gonna be part of our review of that site circulation plan that they're gonna submit to us.
I, I understand you talked about RSIS and that's what you gotta go with. Um, I don't know when RSIS was created, I think it was probably around the time of Fred Flintstone went. Fred used to go to the Corian, women used to stay home, but nowadays it's, you know, when you look at the RSIS numbers, two-point-one-six for a three-bedroom apartment, two cars, two spaces for one, a three-bedroom, I, I think the numbers are really low and I think also if you consider the fact that based on the rules for our elementary school system, if you're within walking distance, you're not crossing the main road, you're not gonna get bused, so I see potentially all the kids not really walking to Frost, but I see parents dropping them off, so that, that's gonna create a little bit more traffic. I don't know if that was included in your, uh, traffic study to any extent. Um, also pedestrian traffic going back and forth between, uh, this shopping area and the one across the street. And I, I'm speaking from experience because I shop across the street quite often and I also do go to CBS. I, I could just see people, you know, going back and forth, you know, between the shopping centers, I don't know if that was factored into your traffic study. But I, I strongly feel even with the introduction of that center turn lane, I think there is a serious potential for issues making that left turn onto Summerhill from that main drive out, even though it is pushed back a little bit. So my question really is to, uh, both of you guys in traffic, have you thought of putting in a do-not-block zone? I mean, we have one over at the, uh, on Cranberry Road where we have the fire station where the exit of the fire station is, is a do-not-block area. Can we do something like that here to facilitate a left turn? That's something you guys can discuss, but, I mean, it's an option. I mean, the one over there on Cranberry Road is literally forty, fifty feet from the traffic light, this is much, much further back.
Mr. Chairman, we can, we can have our experts take a look at what you suggested.
Okay.
I mean, the county road, obviously.
Right.
But, fair enough.
I mean, the question really is in the interest of let's try to make this project a little bit better because it is going to be a nightmare from my perspective and from everyone who's sitting back here. We've all kind of codenamed this the golden corner. We've all kinda codenamed this the Golden Corner, you know, just so, you know, but... The other question is, is that CVS staying a CVS? Is that CVS going to remain a CVS?
Yes, I believe so.
Will it be a Walgreens or a Rite Aid or some other store, or is it definitely a CVS?
At least it's a CVS.
Okay, the reason I'm asking is because we have another CVS on Route 18 that doesn't really seem to be trafficked too well, and I'm concerned that a CVS on this corner, what impact it'll have on the other CVS on Rusland?
We don't care.
Yeah, as you know, Doran, those are, those kind of decisions, the planning board can't take into account, that's a business decision, a CVS thing, so...
Since you're working with CVS, if I may, since you're working with CVS, is there any plans for CVS to move from Rusland to this location?
I have no idea.
Okay.
I doubt it, I mean, you know, CVS, Walgreens, Rite Aid, they're really not pharmacies here in the real estate business, they just look for locations, that's all.
Yeah, my concern is we have this one open up and the other one closes down, and now we have another vacant spot in East Brunswick.
If you have, if you have an empty corner somewhere, it's likely that there'll be one of those type of things.
Okay. Real brief, I know you have a long line, you did talk about...
I think, in fairness to the other residents who wanna speak, kinda running over the...
Yeah, I've been, I've been watching the clock inside, so Mr. Cohen's got about 20 seconds, so he's...
All right, all right. Last 20 seconds.
To Larry and to David, let the chairman...
No, I'm just...
I'm telling you, let the chairman... Doran.
No more questions, but one, one going back to what he had said earlier, when he was talking about snow and how snow is gonna be piled up in different areas, and they talked about hauling snow off and all that. They've made certain commitments, is there any way, I don't know if it's legally possible, is there any way to put some of these commitments that they're making, cuz my understanding is, once this project's built, it may be sold? If that's the case, how do we hold their feet to the fire? Can we make this acceptance conditional in a way with penalties?
These would all be conditions, and certainly if, well, first of all, they're gonna provide a snow rule plan soon, soon, I mean, it's gonna be something we wanna see, you know, certainly before the next meeting, I mean, I'm sure they can, they'll be able to provide that for us, but all of these would be, if the board acts favorably on this application, these would all be conditions of approval. They're enforceable by our code enforcement, they're enforceable by our police department, by our fire department, so we always have teeth.
I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand and you swear, you swear to tell the truth, tell the truth, self you got.
I do.
State your name, spell your last name and tell us where you live.
Melinda Hoffman, H-O-F-F-M-A-N, I'm at 333 Summer Hill Road. I'd like some clarification regarding the approach to the intersection from Summer Hill Road from the north. So, the leftmost lane at the intersection will be a right-turn-only lane?
The left, coming southbound on Summer Hill?
Yes, the westernmost lane on Summer Hill.
Is a right-turn lane, yes.
And where does the right-turn lane start?
It starts right at the end of our driveway, right now...
At the north driveway, the south driveway?
The south driveway, right now at the office building driveway, it opens up into the second lane at that point. We're gonna open it up into that second lane farther back at our side driveway.
Alright, so then moving over one lane, you've got the straight lane going to Spotswood, and then next to that is the center two-way lane.
It's at the signal, it's a left-turn-only lane, and then by the, starting about the 711 driveway on north, it's two-way.
And that starts at the edge of the property? Two lanes or two ways?
Yes, the northern edge of the property down to where the left-turn lane for the signal begins.
Right, and you said that part of the benefit we'd appreciate from that lane would be removing the left-turning people from the queue, so that would lessen the length of the queue going back north on Summer Hill.
Anyway, if you wanted to turn left into your driveway from southbound Summer Hill, I assume you live on the opposite side?
No, no, I'm just asking whether...
In either direction, if you wanted to turn left into our, the site or any of the other driveways, you would pull into that center left-turn lane and the through traffic would be able to pass you.
Correct.
It's like waiting behind you to turn left.
Yeah. My question is, as people are heading south on Summer Hill, they're entering that two-way lane to turn left, at the same time, people are exiting the driveways to turn left north onto Summer Hill, these people are traveling in opposing directions? If it's a time of day when the intersection is stacked, then the fact that people have, people who are attempting to turn left have to stop and make, people who are attempting to turn east on Old Stage Road are having to stop to make way for people turning left north onto Summer Hill Road?
Yeah, you can travel in both directions in the lane, that's why it's a two-way lane.
Right, what I'm saying is if people are turning left, if people are turning out of the development north onto Summer Hill Road, at the same time as people are attempting to utilize that lane going south to turn east onto Old Stage, it doesn't seem like it's going to provide as much benefit in terms of lessening the number of left-hand turners in the queue.
Well, the left turns to go onto Old Stage are farther, are farther south of the driveway at the traffic signal. If you wanna make a left out of the driveway and somebody's making a left in to one of their residential homes across the street, the person making the left out has to yield until that person makes a left in, just like in any other end of civilized intersection.
Right.
You're at a stop sign, you have to wait for that person to clear out before you make your left out.
So, in that scenario, when the road is, when Summer Hill is stacked, let's say you've got your backup of 32 cars, when someone is attempting to turn north onto Summer Hill, they're going to be facing, there's going to be a car, like, let's say I'm trying to turn left, there's a car right here that is waiting to go in this direction, so, and there's probably gonna be a car right here waiting to go south on Summer Hill, that really limits my visibility.
Yes, it does, and that's one of the benefits, one of the discussions we have in the county of putting that center left-turn lane, your visibility would be limited if there was just a double yellow line before the next lane of traffic, but now you have a 15-foot buffer before that next lane of traffic. That's happening now at the office building driveway, that's with the county stores, that people are pulling out into that Gore Street area, so we're making it so it's then settling and legally rather than illegally.
Right.
Maybe I'll try to think and explain this, so I'll bring a diagram next time.
Just, really, that's about it, yeah. That was a rather lengthy question, I think, you had an answer, you may not have agreed with his answer.
Well, the other thing is, I live on Summer Hill and I have the opportunity to observe the queue, and since the first meeting that we had about this, I looked at the traffic study, and I was wondering if perhaps, I was thinking of these really long queues as perhaps that was an unusual situation, it was just sticking out in my mind, it wasn't really happening that often, but since then, I've been observing it regularly, and it is common for traffic to back up a half mile up Summer Hill Road. It's not an unusual occurrence, it happens frequently. I looked at it today and it was moving pretty freely throughout rush hour, but the really lengthy queue is not an outlier, that's a half mile of cars that are backed up on a pretty regular basis.
Ma'am, you've exceeded your five minutes, thank you.
Thanks.
Please raise your right hand and you swear, you swear to tell the truth, tell the truth, self you got.
I will.
State your name, spell your last name and tell us where you live.
Jumanadiwan, D-I-W-A-N, I live at 38 Francis Road. I need to go back to 2017, I believe it wasn't March, we saw some roads crossing the street. So, are they related to the study you did or any traffic study?
No.
Or what they were related to?
We didn't name all the traffic counts, but it's possible that there's, there's those two counts available someplace that somebody did.
So, it wasn't you? No, just, I was wondering, there was a snowstorm at that, and I was wondering, I was wondering what's going on. Okay, the second concern I have, every time I need to make a left turn on Old Stage, I have a hard time, because the traffic is so bad, and I have here some pictures that you can, I can back it to you.
Yeah, you can't submit those.
Okay, we all know, I guess, how bad is the traffic on Old Stage, especially, all day long, especially during rush hours. My question is, if we are adding an exit from the development now, when I'm on 38 Francis, when I'm on Francis Road trying to make the left turn on Old Stage, I have trouble making the left turn because it's backed up, the eastbound towards Old Stage, and the southbound, also I have to watch for the cars that's coming, there's the pit stop here, and there's the left, the right turn on the light, the cars, even when the light is red, supposedly it's red and I need to make a left turn, there's always cars coming from Summer Hill Road making right turn, and the ones that's coming from the stop making right turn, and I cannot really make my left turn, and now we're adding another exit that's making also the right turn.
Well, there's a car there, one there that, we're just moving.
Well, this one is not, no, no one uses it, there is one there now, but we know that no one uses it, there's no car coming from this, and there's a little slope, so it's hard to really see farther the cars. It's really hard because we are on a, the road, like, it goes down, it go down, and it's like, we cannot see the cars, so it's a hazard, it's a, it can cause accidents. I don't know, there is any, like, did you think about putting a light there for the traffic, like, that would force them to stop or the people...
You're talking about at the intersection of Francis and Old Stage? No, that's, that's not going to happen, no, that's, there has to be warrants and analysis to determine if it's justifiable, it's not at that intersection, unfortunately.
Well, I would like them to take into consideration that they're adding more traffic now and it's gonna be so hard for us.
We take judicial notice, ma'am, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Of course.
Please raise your right hand and you swear, you swear to tell the truth, tell the truth, self you got.
I do.
State your name, spell your last name and tell us where you live.
Russell Like, last name is Like, L-I-K-E, 7 Eric Lane, East Brunswick. So, question for the traffic engineer, when you did the traffic generation analysis, you used nationally recognized standards for trip generation from a development of this type?
Yes.
Okay, because as the chairman said earlier, what we often find in East Brunswick due to the quality of the school system is that occupancy of apartments of this kind are often much higher, and I don't think we expect every school child who's gonna be in this development to leave as soon as they get a driver's license, in fact, given the nature of the economy and the prolonged nature of education, many of them will be at their parents' place probably well into their twenties, so I think that it would make more sense to use traffic generation numbers pertaining to a development of this type specifically from within East Brunswick, given your comments from earlier. And the other comment I would like to make is, I know that you, the applicant has said that they've got over this with Middlesex County traffic, that doesn't give me much confidence. I grew up in East Brunswick and I've lived in there for a long time, I can tell you that the job that Middlesex County has done with traffic planning for 535, for example, down 200, change A.A. is atrocious, and in the past 10 to 15 years, the time it's taking me to drive from my house to A.A. has approximately doubled, so that's thanks to...
I was gonna say triple.
Triple, well, yeah, I was trying to be honest, but I was being conservatively honest.
A lot.
But yeah, triple may be more accurate. But that's, that's a testimony to the kind of job Middlesex County does when they do their traffic analysis, they have, they have recklessly allowed all sorts of warehouse development along Cranberry Road without, and 535, whatever it's called further south, without any heed to the traffic impact as far as I can see. So, I take no comfort from their assurance that the county is happy with this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand and you swear, you swear to tell the truth, tell the truth, self you got.
I do.
State your name, spell your last name and tell us where you live.
Kristen, K-R-I-S-T-Y-N, Corace, C-O-R-A-C-E, 203 Willard Clark Circle, Spotswood. I've been a special education teacher with students with severe disabilities, many with physical handicaps for over 25 years, so I have a few questions about the parking spaces in this development. There are several different kinds of handicapped ADA-compliant spots, what type of spots are you proposing, please? Can you explain what type of spots they are?
They're both van-accessible, we're actually required under code to provide a percentage of van-accessible, and which will have your eight-foot-wide space and your eight-foot-wide refuge, or I'll call it gore area, the strip area is alongside it, and then the balance will be, again, the eight-foot space with a five-foot space.
Okay, are you...
So, we're providing the proper distribution of those spaces on...
I'm sure you're, you're sticking to your numbers, are you considering that, one spot or two spots?
I don't know the number offhand, I...
No, 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 are you considering a handicap spot with the wheelchair and spot lip, one or two spots?
One.
Okay. I'd like to get a, use your little pointer and show the bottom blue handicap parking spot on the bottom there, okay? So, now show the bottom of the left building, all the way down the bottom. Okay, I'm gonna live there, not by the dumpster, in the building. I'm gonna live at the bottom there, but I need to use that spot, and I could be in a wheelchair, a walker, I could have a clear disabilities MS or something like that.
Your, your point, I'm sorry, your point is taken, it was brought up earlier about the distribution of those spots, and actually that, that being one of them we focused on, and we will be looking at moving those spots probably to the front doorway, and probably shifting even a spot or two over to this area here, so that's in front of the building at that location. We're already covered the building in the upper, in the northwest corner, and the spaces that were relocated are in front of the two buildings to the east, so we do have some relocating to do, more so than we did with our last plan, and we'll have it taken care for the next meeting.
Great. Along those three buildings, all the way in the front of those buildings, what is your sidewalk and curb cut situation?
In front of the buildings?
Yep, open wall, yep, that's tight.
There's only walkways out to the front, out the front entrance of those buildings.
Are there curb cuts?
There's a, it's a, goes down to a depression, so, yeah, you, there's a ramp to be able to walk in.
In the, so the front entrance?
At the front entrance, yeah.
What about, what about the side entrances that you said the people have to go in?
Yeah, their emergency, I was corrected, their emergency exits out are actually used for trash and...
So, there's steps, it's not grand?
So, they're really actually not, we're gonna be, I'm gonna be forced to move those spots because they're really not entryways into the building, they're not meant to be the entryways, it's the front of the building, so I'm gonna be forced to move those parking spaces.
I'm glad you're forced to do that, because, you see, just because things have numbers and you're required to do things, doesn't mean it's the right thing to do.
Well, the right thing to do is to put them...
Now, you're interrupting me.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're correct.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
So, I want you to take into consideration, not just with ADA compliance, this entire thing, just because you can fit your numbers and you're compliant with your numbers, doesn't mean it's the right thing to do.
We are over our numbers in total, just so we're gonna go beyond that, and I will say that the next plan you see will have those ADA spaces at the front entrances, the closest spots, and we'll make it very clear, the path to those locations is as short as possible, and provide further clarification if we need to upon reviewing with professionals for the town, any other smaller details that we need to add in to make sure it's a clean access into those buildings.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Your time is up, I gave you your five minutes.
Thank you very much.
Please raise your right hand and you swear, you swear to tell the truth, tell the truth, self you got.
I do.
State your name, spell your last name and tell us where you live.
My name is Wilson Contreras, C-O-N-T-R-E-R-A-S, I live in 3 Prince Road, East Brunswick. I have a question for the civil engineer, how many management people are gonna be on site?
I'm not sure the civil engineer can answer that.
Yeah, I'm not sure the civil engineer can answer that.
Okay, well, basically, I was referring, if you have two or three people on site, where are they going to park? Because normally, if they're working, they're gonna be parking or taking one of these spots within the development. I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
The engineer indicated that there's excess parking, so if there are a couple...
Okay, just wanna bring that to the board's attention, also, regarding to CVS, last meeting, you mentioned that you had to, you require 66 spots for CVS, and you only had 59. Did you address that issue with this parking of CVS?
Well, yes, CVS has reviewed this plan extensively and it's fine with the 59 parking spaces, going to the ordinance requirement is actually more spaces than they would need.
So, it's not a township requirement, it's just a CVS requirement?
Well, yeah, CVS is acceptable in having that number there, even though it doesn't meet the ordinance requirement, however, to go back to that... However, to go back to my testimony, the overall number of parking spaces, all uses tallied up total together, the total number of parking spaces now is even more in excess of the ordinance.
So you're pretty much taking spaces from another location to fulfill that requirement?
You can, you can say that, yes, we're distributing it, but it, to the, to the point, CVS is fine with the fifty-nine parking spaces.
Regarding CVS, you said that one truck is going to be doing delivery from CVS?
One large truck will be delivering one time per week.
Are you aware that CVS may take the deliveries from other vendors, or is it just going to be one CVS truck?
Yes, I made note of that in my testimony at the first meeting, that other smaller trucks will also come during the day.
Are you aware that they're not allowed to use the back door to do deliveries, they have to do the front door?
The, the size of the trucks, there'll be a little, some will be vans that pull into the fronts of the parking spaces, I, I'm aware of that. I've, I've testified on numerous CVS pharmacies.
Okay, so just want to make sure that the board's aware of that as well. Regarding the truck, when it's exiting the the road, normally they will travel southbound on Summerhill Road, make the right turn, then turn into the development to do the delivery. When they come out, what are the chances of the truck making a left turn into Summerhill Road North?
I, again, I don't know the full route of CVS, as I might have been talked to by Craig. It's possible that you go that route, but-
Because that's going to add into the traffic when you have a fifty-four trailer or even a full-size truck trying to make a left turn crossing three or four lanes into Summerhill.
And that will, just to, to further go into my testimony, that delivery is taking place off peak hours, so the peak hour times that are of concern with the traffic building up, the delivery is taking place not during that period of time, so the ability to make that-
That could be a concern, nothing in traffic. Is that correct?
The truck is not making that turn during the peak hour times, when that, when the traffic is backing up.
It's possible it could make the turn.
It's, it's possible for it to make that turn, yes.
One more question, I guess it has to do with the the, the study, the traffic study, so it's pretty much a traffic study. Is my knowledge that it was only two weekdays in one weekend, is that correct?
We did, we looked at the weekday morning, weekday evening, and Saturday midday.
Just wanted to make the word, the port aware that traffic from Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and Friday, the area varies, it's very dynamic. So it would be ideal to have the test done, you know, through the week, instead of just kicking two days out of the week, because that would lead to only twenty percent of the actual report being accurate. Because we're not counting traffic on different days, which could be different from what the study will report. Is something that, you know, could be possible?
That's something that'll be worked out with our traffic engineer and their traffic.
Okay, and one more last question?
Well, you got ten seconds, so-
Yeah.
Ten seconds.
You said one more question.
Oh, one more, yeah, one more question. Why can't you just build luxury single homes and sell them?
Yeah, that's not an appropriate question. The applicant's putting the application, it's before us.
Sorry, your time is up.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand, you swore, you swear to tell the truth to all true self you got.
I do.
State your names, spell your last name and tell us where you live.
Lisa Sonatore, last name's S-O-N-A-T-U-R-E, I live three Henrietta Street. It's corner of Mason, Hemington. I don't think the impact to the surrounding streets is really being addressed at all, certainly isn't being addressed in the traffic study. I live at the corner of Henrietta and Mason, it's one block in from Summerhill.
No, right, we're near it.
So it's about two hundred and fifty feet from the northern edge of this property. I don't know if you're familiar with that neighborhood, but
I am.
We only have two ways in and out of that neighborhood. The main route is Mason. That's how we predominantly leave this development, and if we want to go anywhere to the south, we're making a left down to Summerhill Road. So only two hundred and fifty feet from this new driveway. Making a left out of there currently is a huge challenge, especially if you're trying to teach a teenager how to drive at all times of the day. It could be when the traffic's stacked up, you have to wait for some friendly person to let you out. But when it's not peak traffic, we have people flying down over that hill doing forty miles an hour. You're trying to make a left, and you're also looking to your left, and you've got all kinds of issues. People coming out of the seven eleven, people making a left from Old Stage. It's quite a maneuver that you have to make. And anyone in my neighborhood can tell you the same thing. It's very difficult, it's dangerous. And none of the traffic patterns that are being proposed are helping us two hundred and fifty feet to the north. In fact, I think it's going to make it more dangerous for us. And I'm really concerned that there's going to be more accidents right there. The other, you know, more minor issue is plenty of people in my neighborhood want to walk across the street and utilize the park. Then, one of the main entrances to Frost Woods is directly crossed from Mason. I go walking in that park at least twice a month. Crossing Summerhill is a challenge on the weekend. Is there any provision for putting in pedestrian crossing? Is there any provision for lowering the speed limit on this road? Is there any provision for making a left turn lane into Mason, because that's another issue coming home on Summerhill? Making that left turn, you're sitting, you're sitting duck there. You've got cars flying up, you're waiting to make your left into Mason as you're heading south, and you've got people flying behind you, tractor trailers trying to get around you. It's dangerous right now, and adding all these other new maneuvers, people coming out of this office park is going to be a problem. It's just too much happening in too small a space.
Please raise your right hand, you swore, you swear to tell the truth to all true self you got.
Yes.
State your name, spell your last name and tell us where you live.
Brian Harkavy, H-A-R-K-A-V-Y, and I live at thirty-three Sterns Road. My first question basically, and forgive me if you've addressed this, I'm just still not understanding. The spots that aren't by the garage in the main apartment buildings, can, in theory, anybody park there, is it going to be enforceable by, let's say, towing if, you know, Joe Schimmel decides to park there to go to ShopRite or whatever?
Are you saying the spots in front of the garage?
Uh, no, the spots like in the middle over there that wouldn't be officially assigned.
For residents and visitors.
For residents and visitors only, enforceable by, what?
Property management.
Property management.
All right, uh, so then my next question, and forgive me if I'm mischaracterizing, I believe in the testimony the last time you said that you aren't looking to, not like officially, but in general, your plan is to have, you're leasing good people who don't have kids, in general. Not in a discriminatory way, but you're advertising words-
Well, what's your point, sir?
My point is getting to you, it seems like you're trying to lease to twenty-five to thirty-five-year-olds. And in general, that age group will likely have a lot of visitors, which will create parking problems that I believe will lead into the ShopRite parking lot, which, you know, if you ever try to park there, it's basically impossible, or the seven eleven parking lot. On top of that, any issues, I feel like the traffic flow of the people driving around, if it's completely full and people are looking for spots, aren't, isn't being completely addressed, and I think causes further safety issues.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand, you swore, you swear to tell the truth to all true self you got. To state your name, spell your last name and tell us where you live, and you're the last person tonight, so you would absolutely not be, but feel free.
Andrea Cozodoi, K-O-Z-O-D-O-I, nine Francis Road. And I think I'm really more appealing to the board. I live on Francis, I have a daughter who'll be driving the next couple of years, we have a bunch of teenagers on Francis. As it is right now, it can take anywhere from five to seven minutes sometimes to make a left up of Francis Road, as it is the same the, the next street over to make a left. Now you're talking about making, making out a right turn lane only out of that parking lot, which will make it even more hazardous to turn left at a Francis. We're going to lose a teenage driver, we're going to lose somebody. It is a dangerous intersection as it is, this will only make it more dangerous, I don't care what they're saying. So I'm appealing to the board that we look at those streets also as part of the traffic study. And again, it, it varies from day to day. It can't be a one-day traffic study, it has to be a traffic study that happens over a week. This is an extremely dangerous situation, and it's not fair with the people on Francis, who already have people making U-turns on their street. And the other thing is, we, I mentioned last time, the flooding situation. That the infrastructure underneath these roads cannot handle what is already happening. And I, and I'm not getting answers as to what's going to change, or how we know that the water can be handled. As it is, when we've had major storms in the past, we've had flooding on the, the houses over on that area of Francis. We've had flooding in ShopRite where people have lost their cars, and extreme storms. Extreme storms, that don't happen all the time. We've had flooding over in that specific corner on Old Stage and Summerhill. Again, in extreme situations. But now adding all these apartments and more cars, and I'm concerned about how, what's underneath the ground is going to handle.
John, can you talk a little bit about how we hope to end the stormwater management in a new development?
Again, chairman, there, there may be some changes that, that will occur as a result of the revised plans, but, but basically what, there are rules and regulations that are dictated by the state of New Jersey. The, this applicant is required to reduce the amount of the peak rate of runoff from the site after the development, the underground detection that they're providing. They have to document that that will accomplish that, and we will not approve it until we're comfortable that, that they are meeting that state requirement.
And that handles what's happening in that development, that does not interest what's happening around that development.
That's correct, they are responsible for their property.
So my question to the, to the board is, how do we ensure if this, this project is going to be approved, how do you ensure that the residents who are already there? I've been a loyal resident to East Brunswick for nineteen years, and the reality is, in the last couple of years, there've been some major disappointments of what's happening in town, between the dump and, and some of the other issues. I think there needs to be some loyalty to the people who are living-
All this work and control is disapplication.
Yes.
So, our engineer explained that we have to make sure that this application will not cause any stormwater runoff problems. Whenever stormwater is created by this application, will be handled by the drainage system that's put in by this applicant. Existing problems, we don't have the power to do anything about or look at.
I understand, and I think that, while I understand, I, my belief would be, and I'm, I'm not an expert, that what happened within this development has to be able to be supported by the groundwork underneath, the other areas around it. And while it may not be something, maybe a township issue, I heard someone over here fumble, go to the township, that's wonderful. But this board still has to make a decision about what's right for the town. And this project, right now, is not right for this town. Okay, and, and it's, and again, you're talking about the traffic patterns in our streets. I'm asking that you put pressure on for them to have to take a look at what, how, how we're going to be able to get off our streets safely, you know, with, with additional traffic making a right out of that parking lot.
Thank you. Well, that, I will now close the public portion.
Mr. Chairman, I think the next scheduled meeting for this application is February twenty-seventh, which is a Wednesday, not a Tuesday. It's a Wednesday night, eight o'clock here at Tamer Shol. You will not receive any further notice, so if you're here this evening, I'm giving you your notice that the next scheduled meeting for this application is Wednesday, February twenty-seventh at eight p.m.
And as odd as this is to say, we see everybody tomorrow night. Thank you again.